Now mine's not turning green.
Everybody's, can you hear me? Everybody's off but me.
Test, test, test.
Test, test.
I can hear you. I can always hear you. You're like the voice in the dark.
Test.
Yep. Deb?
Test.
Steve, you on?
Testing, testing.
Test. Now my, what?
One, two.
Test, test, yep.
Check, one, two, check.
John, are you good?
Yep, I'm good.
Marnie, are you good?
Test.
Okay. So, Marnie, you want to call the roll again since we were talking to nobody?
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Councilmember Steve Friedman.
Still here.
Councilmember Deb Gillis.
Yes.
Councilmember Buddy Pinder.
Still here.
Vice Mayor Don Horton.
I'm here.
And Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Yes.
We still have a quorum.
Okay. I would like to ask Henry Rosenthal to lead us in the pledge, please, Henry.
Put your hand over your heart, please. Follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Henry. Okay. Counsel? Requests for deletions, emergency additions. Does anybody have anything? Please raise your hand if you do. Go ahead, Steve.
Is this where I ask to pull something? Can I pull, tap, sir?
When you say pull, you mean pull it from the consent agenda and put it on regular? You can do it now or whenever we get to consent agenda. It doesn't, doesn't matter.
Okay.
Anything else? Steve, anything else?
Um, no.
Buddy?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, this letter that I just asked Steve. If he sends out to the council and talking about village businesses, is that public? Oops, sorry.
Is that public information?
I mean, I don't know what the, yeah. If, if any council member is sending out anything that has to do with your business as a council member, then yes, that, that is a public record and is public information, yes. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah. I just, I just, I wanted everybody to know, so when I'm talking to Steve, that's what I was, other than telling him Happy New Year, what, what I was talking to him about. Cause I, I got phone calls about a letter that some people received from Steve, whether there are people that, you know, contributed or whatever, but, and I didn't know what the letter, I haven't seen it, so I wanted to know where, if people are calling me and asking me questions, I want to, I want to see the letter. I just want it to be public, that's all. Just like the ICA does, you know, Ms. Miller sends a letter out every week, but it's, you know, public to everybody.
Okay. I mean, i- if it related to, to village business or anything that could conceivably come before you all, yes, it would be a, a public record, so.
Okay.
Okay. Deb, do you have anything? Don?
No, ma'am.
Okay. The only thing I'd like to say is to council members to please remember that we are functioning all together and to please be respectful of each other. And for the audience, once again, I'm going to ask to please show respect to the council members as they were voted in by this community, whether you agree or not, they're up here. And so I'm going to ask you to please refrain from calling them names. They don't do that to you. So if that happens again, I'm going to have the person removed from the room. I want to have some dignity in these meetings and we don't need to call anybody any names or anything. So I would ask you to please consider that when you get up to speak, okay? Anything else from anybody or we're good to move on? Do it. Okay. Reports, presentations, and announcements. Peter Frezza, I see you are the first victim tonight. Please come on up.
Good evening, counsel. Let me move this forward a little bit. So, as you may be aware, the village did complete a very detailed roadway vulnerability, roadway elevation mapping project this past year using the mobile LiDAR technology. The reason we completed that because we did have a significant need to acquire very detailed road elevations for a number of capital planning projects we had planned for this year, including our roadway vulnerability analysis, which is on, which is going on right now. That's a sea level rise planning project where we're trying to find the most vulnerable roads, low-lying areas for potential road elevation projects, like the county's doing right now. We also needed the data for our stormwater master planning, which we're doing right now as well. We'll be doing a number of stormwater projects into the year which require these data. And there were a number of other reasons as well, road maintenance, et cetera. Now, the project is completed. It was very successful and we are currently using the data. But as part of the deliverable, deliverable package from our, our contractors, they created a digital elevation model. It's a web, ArcGIS web app, a very simple online tool. You do not need GIS to use this, really simple tool. It's open to the public and anyone can use it, just a really easy way to see all of the elevations of all the publicly, or all the public roads within the village. So I'm just going to give a, a brief demonstration of that right now. We do have it housed on the village website. I'm just going to share my screen. Hopefully you all will be able to see this. All right, great. So where we are keeping that is in the, the planning department page. So go to departments, go to planning. We are keeping this in the sustainability and resiliency section. You see that? We thought that'd be a good spot to keep this map. So if you go to sustainability and resiliency, you will see 2024 most up-to-date mobile LiDAR roadway elevation data. So if you click on that, that'll take you to this online tool. So Monroe County, we, the elevations for Marathon, Leighton, Key Colony Beach, and the village are all housed here. I think in the future, maybe all the county will be on this, but for right now, it's those municipalities. So if you click on, all you have to do is click on explore right there in the middle. So right away, that'll take you to Marathon. It's just the way they programmed it, right in the middle of the keys. But we can start there. I'll just show you how to use this. Over on the left, you'll see it's a very simple legend. The, the range is from negative 6.7, that's feet, up to 18.2 feet. That's the NAVD 88. That's the most commonly used datum for elevations right now. So all you need to do, let me just scroll out a little bit so you can, oh, it's not scrolling. Okay, there we go. Just scroll out, you can see, we're in Marathon right now. I'll just scroll in and all you have to do is just click anywhere where you see color here. And if you want to get the elevations, you can look on the left, it comes up, that's 3.45 feet. So this is extremely precise. The way it was explained to me, if you have a square foot, there's about 15 elevations within each square foot. So this is, this is extremely high resolution. Anywhere you want to look, just click around. Let me, I'll zoom out of here. Let's go down to Isle of Marata. That as well. We could zoom in on Lower Matacumbe. This, where does that Port Antigua looks like? Just anywhere you want to go, just zoom in, click. 2.94. The colors, I wouldn't put too much weight on these colors because the, the scales change as you zoom in and out. It's really just finding where you want to go and clicking and the elevations popping up there on the left. And this is for every publicly owned road. We did not include US-1 on this as it's not our responsibility, but to maintain, if you go, you know, let's say, go to Plantation Key, all of the old road is included on this. Again, we could just click on an area that we know is pretty high. I think, yeah, it's high in there. 9.7 feet, 9.5 feet. There were some areas of US-1 that were included. I think that's just where the van drove. This is a mobile LiDAR, meaning the sensor was on a van. You all may remember, it was a WSP van driving around the village for a while, the giant sensor off the back. It's actually a laser. LiDAR is a laser. Stands for light detection and raising, bounces a laser off back into the sensor. So they drove all the roads. So a little bit of US-1 is included as well. So that's really it, 9.37 feet there. I just wanted to show you all and the public that this is available for the village. It's for nothing more, this digital elevation model is for nothing more than personal knowledge and information. It's not what our contractors are using, doing these other studies. This is for the public to use and for your own knowledge and to play with. So, you know, have fun and that was it. And if you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Go ahead, Don.
Thank you, Peter. You know, a lot of people still look at their flood maps and the flood maps are NGVD and they, and they understand, you know, what flood zone they're in and they understand what elevation their, maybe their ground slab is at their house, but they may not understand that, how you transfer an elevation from NGVD to NAVD. So in Isle of Marata, is there a multiplier that you can use to kind of get a feel for what that actual elevation is?
There is. I don't know it off the top of my head, though. I don't want to say it right now. There is, sure. Yeah, there's a, there's an equation to convert.
And when the new flood maps come out, are they going to come out? And maybe I'd ask Sheila this, but are they going to come out in NGVD or in NAVD?
I think they're going to be in NAVD.
Okay. So we're going to have to get used to figuring out what heights are in a different way.
Yeah, because that's the standard datum now.
Yeah.
So correct.
Okay. Cool. Thank you.
Sure.
How about if you take a second and explain the difference between those two because he knows what he's talking about?
So that's simply NGVD and NAVD. That's just different, they're called datums. That's just a reference point for elevation, an established reference point. It's a way of making zero, right? These, these values are feet above sea level. So NAVD was just a more recent datum. That's the new datum. So NGVD was the older one. Things change over time. That's just the most up-to-date, recent reference point for elevation across North America. So zero is zero. Go ahead.
No, go ahead. Finish your statement.
No, that's it. So zero is zero across that whole area.
So both of them are above sea level, not one above sea level and one above ground level.
It's a vertical data.
Correct. Correct. But we can have elevations in, in the negative. You know, they're below that zero point, but that, you're correct.
Yeah, I understand that, but I, the two different forms, it's, it's, the weather people talk about, they changed how they were going to predict surge and they took it above ground level instead of above sea level. And we all knew if you were five feet above sea level and they said we're going to have three foot, well, okay, we still have two feet. So that's why I'm asking that question.
Okay. So, I mean, the elevations can be above or below sea level, but just think of like zero as average sea level. That's mean sea level.
But both of those forms are above sea level. I mean, use the sea level line as their basis.
Yes.
One's just a newer line.
Yes.
Okay.
That's right.
Anything else? Anyone?
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you so very, very much. I think it's a cool tool to have. Thank you. Okay. Citizens Advisory Committees, Ms. Diane, would you please come up?
Thank you, counsel, and welcome to all our new council members and our ones that stayed as well. My name is Diane Harbaugh. I'm the chairman for the nearshore advisory committee. We met sometime ago, it was November 12th. So a little bit of my information that I'll be giving in the report is dated, but I'll update you of what I know as of recently. The sheriff's department updated the committee on the new boat that's, that should arrive in a couple of months. They intend to sell one of the old boats. They informed us that there's a new marine officer who's trained in actively working patrols. They also reported that eight derelict vessels have recently been removed from, and one of them was in, one of the ones we were talking about on our committee in Little Basin. The Florida Keys National Marine Sanctuary was, has a new acting superintendent. The sanctuary blueprint is expected to wrap up in the near future. Well, it has wrapped up and it is going through all the stamping process right now in the federal government. It will then be sent to our governor, who will have 45 days to veto any portion, part, or all of it that he may seem fit to do so, and then it goes back. So it's not over, but it's being stamped right now and hopefully at my next report, which should come shortly after our next meeting, I'll have more information about where we are with sanctuary. The committee heard an update on Tavernier Creek slow speed minimum wake extension. This is from Tavernier Creek, the entrance on the bayside into Tavernier Creek where it is now. The extension is in permitting and we do expect that to happen hopefully this year. The committee discussed boating impacts across from Papa Joe's and the prop scars on those flats. Ligonviti State Park is planning to put up signs around the flat in question. The committee discussed the possibility of having EPA install bird stakes if these buoys are not enough of a deterrent. And the EPA is actually working with one of our members right now to put up some bird stakes in that one area where they just leave Papa Joe's and blow across the flat. So that is in process. The committee discussed the concerns of the residents at the end of Indian Mound Trail who are asking for signage like that, the markers that are at Snake Creek and Tavernier Creeks for no, no wake, slow speed. These signs are Coast Guard markers in Tavernier Creek and Snake Creek, so we don't have authority to put up anything like that. The possibility may be that a residence could put up signs like at the end of their dock or at the corner, at the end of the road or something like that. But we have put our buoys in there recently and they do say no wake. It's back to that enforcement problem that we have with everything in the world. The committee has received a request from Ligonviti State Park to make Stark's Wheel Ditch, which is the wheel ditch back in behind Robby's, to slow speed minimum wake. The nearshore water committee has been told in the past that this is not in, within our authority. After much discussion, Diane will reach out to FWC, who told Ligonviti to ask the village and see if we are the regulating body of that area. Once confirmation of that has been received, the committee will discuss it further, if further action is warranted. It's, how, how do I say this politely? It's being discussed, we'll call it. Who really that has that authority? FWC says now that it might be Ligonviti, that state park that has it. And so nobody really wants to claim it, so we are still working on that, just so y'all know. The committee wanted to inform the newly seated council about our past recommendation for Sunset Drive Beach. The majority of the committee voted in July 30th, 2024, to recommend that the council does not consider a new vessel exclusion zone on Sunset Beach. You may be hearing it called a swim zone, but it is in a vessel exclusion zone, same thing. And instead focus on alternatives to vessel exclusion zones and a more holistic approach to long-term planning and management for all nearshore areas of Isle of Marata. Because as we stated back at that meeting, we blew up the balloon when we made the, at Lower Matacumbe on the bayside, we blew up the balloon. Now the balloon has, and squos and it's popped up over on Sunset Drive. As soon as that gets excluded, vessel exclusion, it's going to get squeezed again and it's going to pop up somewhere else. This, our committee would like our new council to take a step and look at the whole village and see what we need to do to make it so that what's happening doesn't happen in another spot in another year. And then I will continue to ask that a council member attend our meetings. I think it's important that someone from the council be at these meetings because then they will see, it's painful sometimes what we go through to come up with these decisions, just like you sitting there, it's painful for you, for your decisions. So Sharon, I know right now you're our liaison and you weren't able to attend the last meeting because of a conflict with another village meeting. So I would like to continue to ask, though, that a council member attend.
Can you do me a favor and send me a text?
Can you do me a favor and send me a text to remind me when they are? Just because I am pulled in fifty different places. So if you would do that, I would love, and I think that's very important. And I'm interested in what you guys mean by holistic approach. I think we do need to sit down and have a conversation about the balloon and squeezing it. And, you know, you see it all over now. They close one place and everybody goes somewhere else. So that is something I think we really do need to look into and to start working on because it's not going to get better. It's just going to get worse.
Right, you're just going to move it.
Yeah, and as far as the bird stakes go, that is phenomenal. They should be more of them because we all know when the birds sit on those stakes and they go potty, it is good for the whole environment. So I don't know, does, do we have any say in that or is that just the EPA? Does anybody know?
The bird stakes?
Yes.
So we request that from them and that's what the nearshore water has done.
Okay.
And the guy at Angler House, and I can't think of his name, he's new on our committee. He has worked with some of them in the past and that's why we're where we are now is because he's been talking to them. The DEP is talking to the National Marine Sanctuary because it's inside the sanctuary. And so we're going through the process. So yes, we're, we're actually already on it.
That's something that we should sit down with a large map and look at. There's several areas that could use that. Because over by Robby's, that cut there that people fly a hundred miles an hour through there. Oh, I know. That's what I'm saying, is that all this stuff needs to be dealt with sooner than later.
But that's another spot that you're talking about that could use bird stakes over there where they cut the corner going into Start.
Exactly. So I think this is wonderful. I love that you do the presentation for us the way you do. So kudos to you. And does anybody have any questions for Ms. Diane up here? No?
I'd just like to say thank you.
You do a great job. You really do. Very informative.
Thank you. I have a great committee. They're fun to work with.
Okay.
Thank you, Diane. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very, very much. Okay, so we'll move to the mayor council communication. It says there's none, but I want to put two things out there for the council members to think about. I do believe, and this would be maybe, I don't know who's in charge of our Christmas decorations, but I believe our five years is up. And I would like sooner than later for us to have a discussion, maybe next month, about what we want to do, where we want to go. If we want to put it out for bid, now's the time to do it before it rolls around and it falls upon us. So everybody be thinking about what we want, what you want to spend and do we want to go out for bid? And if, I, I will get that on the agenda next month so we can have that discussion. And the other thing I want you guys, if you would think about, please, is charitable giving. How you guys feel about it, if we want to continue doing it, how we do it. And again, it's embarrassing when it comes up in front of us and we haven't thought about it or have time to discuss how we feel. So I'm trying to get ahead of the game. So if you guys will all put on your thinking caps and I'll get it on for discussion next month. Is that good with everybody? And the last thing is Steve, we have to relook at July. July's change of the meetings is not going to work. So we'll have to look at that calendar again, if that's okay with everybody.
Sure.
Okay.
Sharon, I have one thing if I can.
Go ahead.
So one of the things that we talked about, or I talked about at that podium to the other council is, is an explanation of, of what happened at the Seabreeze Trailer Park and, and the three Florida statutes that intermingle themselves that has made it to where those modular homes that are there are considered mobile homes and they don't have to pay real property tax. And, and I'd like to have a discussion sometime in, in the near future with, with the council and, and include our lobbyists so that we can see if we can get on the legislative agenda to discuss the change of Florida statute five, five, three, three, twenty and three, nineteen with a bunch of decimals behind it. But, but those three statutes intermingle with each other that allow them to have installed all of those modular homes, license them as mobile homes and not have to pay a real property tax. So I think it's an important thing that we bring to our lobbyists and maybe they can take it to the legislator and have that changed somehow to where that, that goes away.
Okay. So. We can get that on the agenda.
Thank you.
February or March. Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, can we open a discussion about fireworks? Whether they're, you know, whether we're paying for them or they're being sponsored in village property. There's just been, there's, there's, you know.
Let me have an example. What are you talking about?
Well, in the fireworks over New Year's Eve, tragically a dog got out, got so scared and got hit by a car.
I heard that.
So anybody who's got pets and has to deal with fireworks, I mean, I just, a discussion is to just kind of hash it out. Do we need it? Do we want it? Is there anything we can do about it?
So you're talking about individuals with fireworks and not like, there's no fireworks here.
I don't think we can do anything about individuals with fireworks, but, you know, if we have fireworks here, if we want to create a policy or anything like that about not doing them, you know.
Did, did we, I didn't think we had fireworks over New Year's.
I don't, no.
The village had fireworks.
I think Marker eighty-eight had some fireworks.
Right.
Yeah, but that's not us.
That's what you're talking about.
Yeah, I think so. Because it was close.
Yes.
Yeah.
I heard about that. It's horrible.
Yeah, it was bad.
Yeah, it was bad.
So, yeah, we can have a discussion. I was just trying to figure out whether, because I'm not sure we can control anything except the village.
That may be the case, but at least we can.
John, do you know anything about that?
Off the top of my head, I don't know if we're preempted from regulating that. Between now and the discussion time in February, that's something that I'm going to look into.
Yeah, to see if. In that way, Steve, we'll get it to talk about in February. Is that good?
Yeah, and, and if we're preempted, I can, can let you all know. If we're not, then you all can have a discussion as to, you know, if and how you might want to proceed.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else have anything?
And I assume that would include all holidays, not just, or year round even.
Well, Fourth of July.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Again, it's something we can talk about whether we want to do fireworks a couple.
All good, fine. Anybody else have anything before we move on? No? Okay. So village attorney, village manager communication. And I believe, John?
Yeah, this is just a reminder, you know, as we've got three new council members, I wanted to kind of bring forward various discussions about the different lawsuits that are out there and I'm trying to spread them out instead of inundating you guys all with them all on, you know, one marathon day. So this is just another one that we're going to schedule for, for February. So I need to read the statutory statement. Pursuant to Florida statute two eighty-six point oh one one eight A, governing public meetings, I as the attorney for the Isle of Rata, for Isle of Rata Village of Islands wish to advise the village during this public meeting that I desire advice concerning the litigation of Daniel J. Galizio, the Isle of Rata Village of Islands at all in the Circuit Court of the Sixteenth Judicial Circuit in and for Monroe County, Florida, case number twenty-three dash CA dash zero, 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 four, four, zero dash P. I ask that we hold an executive session on February eleventh, twenty twenty-five at four PM. Attending the session will be the mayor, council members, village manager, myself, and special counsel Brian Koji.
What time did you just say?
Four PM.
Killing me. It's Valentine's week.
Yeah, it is.
You're killing me. All right, so February eleventh, four o'clock in this room, correct?
Uh, yeah, well, we'll coordinate with Marnie. Either be in this room or at the conference room. But most, I mean, preferably here because then that way we can just flow right into the council meeting.
And now might be a good time to remind the council, four o'clock Thursday?
There's, I think the, did the notice say four or four thirty? Yeah, four thirty on Thursday.
Thank you, Deb. Okay, so everybody knows four thirty in this room on Thursday. Okay. John, anything else?
Nope, not from me.
Okay, next, I see it's Peter again. And this is something that Diane just talked about, so it's good timing.
It is. Thank you. So it was first at the June two thousand twenty-four, last summer, village council meeting that the idea of a proposed new vessel exclusion zone or swim area off of Sunset Drive Beach was first discussed. At the village council's request, this item was placed on the July two thousand twenty-four agenda where I gave a presentation just with a background information on this proposed idea, showed a bunch of photographs, discussed considerations that would need to be worked through if we were to move forward with this, and then also laid out the steps that we would need to take if we were going to go forward with this. So at that meeting, the direction from the council was to look into a feasibility study on this, which would look into the environmental concerns, look into the, or complete the design and permitting, look into sovereign submerged lands easement issues, and complete all the surveys that would need to be done if we were going to look into installing new buoys. So it was left at that. And we also took public comment following that. So this has kind of been hanging out there a few months, for a few months. We're getting closer and closer to summer. I've started to get interest in this again. So we do have a proposal from WSP, our vendor that does, has done a lot of the design and permitting for us. They did the work at the Port Antigua at White Marlin Beach Swim Zone for us. They always do an excellent job for us. So this is a few months old now and they are also asking if we're going to move forward with this. So I just thought the timing was right and we need to start discussing this at some point. That was the direction of the council. And it's going to be probably springtime when all the boats start anchoring up in that area again. So here we are with a proposal from WSP. We brought this to you not as a resolution to, to pass tonight. Just we thought it was best that, you know, we discussed this first, again, raise the idea. And then if the council does want to move forward with this, we can bring, you know, this design and permitting and feasibility study back to you at a future meeting and we can move forward with it. You know, an ordinance, passage of an ordinance would go hand in hand with this. You do, we would have to have an ordinance passed in order to complete the design and permitting. We could complete an ordinance or pass an ordinance without this, but without the buoys in place, the ordinance would be useless because we wouldn't be able to enforce it. So those two would go hand in hand. If we want to move forward, the first thing we would do is draft an ordinance, which we would adopt, and then complete the design and permitting at the same time. So here we are, bringing this back to you to see if the council wants to discuss it, if you want to move forward, if you want to can the idea. Just looking for some direction moving forward.
Well, one thing I'll say is Diane has brought up a very good point about the balloon effect. But I understand the people who live on Sunset, I wouldn't want people in front of my house either. I, I don't know if this needs to be looked at more or to have a public, I don't know how to, where we go with this. Does anybody have a suggestion? Because it's a very slippery slope when you start doing stuff like this because we're just going to shove them down there. But the homeowners have a right to their privacy or, you know, their quality of life as well. Does anybody have any thoughts on this besides me?
The only thought I had, Sharon, was this, WSP is a contractor of ours?
Yes, we do have a current, current continuing services agreement with them.
We have any, do we have any others in our library besides them?
We do. Sure. We have other environmental and engineering firms. Yes.
Because the collection and data process of thirty thousand, seven hundred dollars is a lot. I, I just got through helping with a project down in Marathon, about the same amount of land. And it was a heck of a lot less to get a, a bathymetric and a, a bentic survey done. And, and this was a really good bath, a bathymetric that had to be done. And the bentic was pretty easy because once we located the depth we needed, we went there. But it's only, what, six buoy sites?
Well, so in fact, it's a good point. It's an extremely large area we'd be looking at. I think that's the reason with, with a number of different sensitive habitats on them. We're going to look at that whole area, not just that small section of the southern part of that road. We need to evaluate that whole area up to Seashore Beach. Because the points were raised that if we just buoy off that first section, say the first one thousand feet, they're just going to move north.
Which is what Diane is saying is that once we, once we do this, then they move somewhere else and we're going to be chasing them all the way up the island and all the way back down.
Right. So the, the major cost of that is for the bentic and bathymetric work because it's so much field work. And we're looking at such a large area. But we could absolutely get more proposals or, you know, bids if, if that's what the council wishes. And then there's also a proposal from the public. Residents on Sunset Drive who have offered to pay, I believe, I think if we can hear comment on that, they have, they have offered to pay for the full cost of design and permitting and implementation. That's what I was told.
Wow.
Wow.
Deb, go ahead.
Well, the email I received and the information I received said that they'd pay for the installation, not necessarily the permitting. So it's like half of it. Instead of, not, not this half, the other half. But that hasn't been run by their board yet either. But they're willing to at least talk a, a public-private partnership on it if we can't find some grant money or something to do. The, the, the information I got today was, I, I did try to call around and check on this, is that the majority of the homeowners are in favor of this. And there's only two that the, the household was split. Husband said yes, the wife said no, or vice versa. So, but most of the people in the area would like us to try to move ahead. I do understand the, how we should try to figure out something as a whole. But I think, I think we need to move ahead with this and work on that simultaneously as something else to do. Because this is, this is what we want to see as a whole in the village.
It'll take time.
And it'll take time. This is, I, I talked to Peter a little bit about it. This, from beginning to end, may take up to two years to get done because it's in the sanctuary and, yeah, maybe longer. Who knows? I'd like to see it at least move ahead. If you want another bid, I don't have a problem with that at all.
Is this in the budget?
Is this in the budget?
I don't know, Peter.
We did not include this in the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year budget. We discussed it and decided to not put it in for this year. This proposal. This, this would, this could fit into the village manager's professional services account, though. That's how we left it, is that if we were going to try and do it this year, that may be an option.
Yeah. So Peter, does, doesn't RES, RES do the same thing?
Yes.
Okay. So I, I'm like Don, I'd like to see three people, three engineering firms to, to look at this.
Okay, I, I will look into that. We have to make sure we don't violate the CCNA on that where we are requesting bids from vendors in our engineering library, which we already have agreements with. So I have to be careful with that. But I'll look into it. We may have to put it out to bid. I think that's the way it would work. I can't individually request bids from firms within our, it violates. So we would have to put it out to bid.
So, well, sorry. Are you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay. Go ahead. So how did you, how did you choose the, the one that you said there's others in our library? How did you come up with, with the RESP?
Right. So we have worked with them for, for years and they've always done an excellent job for us for any type of design and permitting in, in the marine environments. I like to go with firms that I like and that have worked well. And this is a fair proposal. I mean, I was in, I did bentix, I did this type of work prior to this job. I know at these costs. And I'm really pleased with the services we get from them. I can't say that for all firms. That's why this was selected. But, you know, we have a great relationship with RES too. I know they would do a fine job as well. On the field work side, there's some firms that are a little, you know, have their own specialties. I know, you know, WSP does a great job on the permitting, which this is going to be more of a permitting challenge than anything, if we can even do it. We may not get permitted for this just because of the sensitivity of the hard bottom. We would need to drill holes. We're not going to be screwing anchors into the bottom there. So we're going to be drilling six to eight inch wide holes, you know, through the coral rock where there's coral and seagrass and sponges. So it might not get permitted. We have to also keep in mind, prove that this is only for the safety of the public. We can't create a vessel exclusion zone because people are being loud or because people unfortunately are harming the environment. It's the Florida statute. This has to be for the safety of the public. And we have to prove that.
But it is. We'll see.
Well, don't you think we should find out if we can even do it before we go out and get bids? I mean.
So that would be part of the feasibility study.
Oh, got it, got it.
Yeah, so, I mean, what we could do is break this up. I mean, I know our vendors would work with us. Let's just, you know, do the first half. Let's see if we could, you know, get it permitted, you know, start some communication with the permitting agencies. We may need an ordinance, though, to do that. They're going to say, where's your ordinance? But that could be part of the feasibility study.
So I would suggest that at our next meeting or two, whatever that works out the best, that we put an ordinance together and that we, ordinance or resolution, whichever. And that we, maybe we do break this into two, but we give them what they need in order to be able to get there. If we need to break this into two and get some other bids, I, I'm open to whatever on that. But to move this ahead, we need to know what we can do and what we can't do. And what we can do here maybe will lead us to some of those decisions. What we can do other places. I talked to you about mooring buoys and we said that that was probably. that was probably even less likely than this.
Right.
Maybe we can make some kind of raft-up ordinance, where you can't raft more than two boats or something. I don't know. But that requires a lot of enforcement out there. So, that doesn't work real well either. But we, we just got to get creative and have some of those people that are more talented than me do that.
Don's been wanting to talk.
Is it, is it a chicken or the egg thing, though? I mean, don't we need to decide what's going to happen off of that beach and any other beach first, and then, and then move on to how are we going to, you know, control that by putting these buoys and then passing a resolution that you can't raft up or something? So, aren't we, are we putting the cart before the horse, so to speak? Maybe we should make a decision on, on, on what's going to happen offshore first.
That would certainly make it easier. If there were a firm decision, that would make it easier, yes.
That makes sense to me. Yeah.
But, but we, we, he was telling me that the buoy idea is really iffy. So, that one's already out. We know that this will work if we can get it through. We've seen it.
It'll work to mark the area, that's all it does. It doesn't do anything else. So, we're spinning a...
Well, it worked really well on Port Antico, Antigua.
That's because we passed a res, an ordinance that didn't allow people to go inside that, that buoyed area. That's not what this is for. This is just to get the okay, to go and do the studies to, to, to see if we can do that. That doesn't get us to the point to where you can't let boats go in there.
You got to do one before you can do the other.
Right. Well, have we made a decision on what we're going to do on not allowing boats there?
He's talking about a feasibility study. I mean, Don, what you're saying is right. But Peter, why can't you call Ryan Matthews and talk to Ryan a little bit about that, somebody that deals with these agencies all the time, you know, and, and test, we're already paying him. So...
Yeah, it's a good call.
You know, why don't we talk to them? And those guys, you know, they can talk to the agencies or...
So, use our state and federal lobbyists to have them communicate with the permitting agencies to see if this would be feasible?
I mean, if you got to get maybe John involved in that, too, a little bit, but just, you know, let these guys that deal with this every day and know the different agencies and have a relationship, let them before we, you know, we find out whether we can even do it or not, if we'd be allowed to. We're already paying them anyways, you know?
I think that's the smartest way to go.
Okay, we could try to work with the lobbyists.
So, who would do that? Who would spearhead that? Would you deal with Ryan?
I could definitely do that. I think we might hit some roadblocks because of the number of agencies involved, staff turnover, the number of staff involved, and the processes that both, there would be four permitting agencies involved with this. FWC, DEP, Army Corps, Coast Guard.
Can we do a pre-application conference with the, with the Army Corps and just let, see what their feel is? I've done several of those with them to get an understanding if they're even going to work with us on that.
Sure. Sure, that would be part of the feasibility study. Absolutely.
Steve, do you want to say anything?
I know it seems painfully obvious, but what's the definition of a vessel exclusion area?
That's a good question. So, every, every float, float, any type of vessel that floats, easiest way to describe this, kayaks, canoes, paddleboards are all vessels. Of course, motorboats. All of those would be considered vessels and would not be allowed in the zone.
Even if there's a tarpin on?
If there's a what?
Right. Even if there's a tarpin, yes. So, that would be a violation if there was someone pulling a boat in there, fighting a fish. Sure.
It's like chasing a sailfish into the sanctuary.
Right. It's not a no-motor zone. It's an exclusion zone, so.
It's like the sanctuary chasing a sailfish into there. You can't, you know, the fish can go in, you can't. You have to let that fish come back out, if you will. So, yeah. So, can we maybe, I agree with what the bits and pieces. I think we need to find out, before we jump in wholeheartedly, find out if, if they're not going to give us the permits, then I don't want to spend the money, you know? I mean, so can we, you maybe just by now, between now and February, find out the possibility of trying to communicate with Ryan, like Buddy said?
Sure. Absolutely.
And just see, maybe that'll give us, in February, come back, and that'll give us some guidance on the next step. Is that agreeable with everybody?
Yep. Okay.
Yep. Deb, okay?
Yeah, I think that's part of the feasibility study is my problem, so.
I do, too. But I, you know, I mean, maybe we should just do the feasibility study.
And I'm, I'm cool with dividing this up, the way you suggested, so.
So, what direction are you, we giving this poor man who we've pulled down five directions?
I mean, I'd be happy to start...
I just, I think we need to work at doing something.
I do, too. So, you want to start with that, and we'll talk about it again in February?
Sure, I could start talking to Ryan. I mean, that's, that can't hurt. See what his thoughts are. I don't know how knowledgeable he is with FWC or Army Corps permitting, but certainly he, you know, could be helped with the DEP side.
He was the Secretary of DEP under Rick Scott, so I think he's, you know, got a little bit of connections.
Yeah.
And with the federal lobbyists, too, if we need to.
Right. Yes, they have, we can do that.
So, I, I know, I know you said that F, F, WSP is, is looking for an answer. Maybe you should talk to them also about the, the strong possibility of dividing this in the future, and let us look at it next month. And depending on how that goes, to help move it along, be prepared with maybe, is it a resolution or an ordinance?
Well, this would be, approve this proposal would be a resolution. If we were to create the new zone, it would be an ordinance.
Okay, but to, to do this and divide it, we'll need a resolution. So, we can just not pass the resolution if we decide not to do it, right?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to stack it so that we get more done at the same time.
All right. So, we'll let you get on the phone in January?
Sure, I'll start, I'll start with Ryan.
And then we can say...
You don't have anything else to do, right?
Work your magic, Pete.
We'll see what we can do.
And we'll bring this back in February, okay?
That sounds good. As a discussion item, would you like this just as a discussion item in the same location, your village manager?
Or you want to move it to a tab?
Well, no, if, if we're going to have a resolution, it's got to be attached.
Oh, you, so you do, you would like a resolution brought back?
We, we may not accept the resolution, but it depends on how quickly you want to move it along.
Okay.
No, I know, but the longer we delay, if we don't have the resolution saying, okay, we need to move ahead, then it's another month before we do it. That's all. I'm just...
Well, I can, why don't I do this? I'll speak with Ryan. I'll speak with WSP to see if they're willing to break it up. Maybe we look into just the feasibility side. We're just going to do a feasibility analysis. Let's start the pre-application meetings. Can we just do that? And I could bring a resolution. If they are amenable to that, I can bring that back to you, if they want to do that. They may not want to do that, but we could find someone else.
They may not want to do that, and when we hear some of the information you're giving us, we may not want to do that either, but...
That sounds good.
Great, Peter.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Appreciate it very much.
Public comment?
No.
Thought we had a discussion about yelling out.
I've signed up to talk to them.
Well, I haven't got, just turn the page, and I'm going to say, Marnie, public comment. That's what I'm doing.
This is a comment on this particular discussion.
Again, this was why we rearranged.
He doesn't want it under public comment. He wants it under this tab.
You can speak to it during general public comment, if you'd like, yeah.
Okay. So, you get to use your public comment for that then?
Again, if you remember, this was why you all had to rearrange the schedule to have these come first, so that people could, if they wanted to speak to it during general public comment, they could.
Okay. So, Marnie, public comment.
Are we there now?
Yes.
And, and just, just as a reminder, Madam Mayor, because I see some faces, different faces in the crowd, if anybody wants to speak on any item, they need to fill out a comment card, and it needs to be into the clerk before the item is called.
Okay, everybody understood? Understand? Okay, Marnie?
Okay, so I do have several folks signed up. We'll start with Jos Yomek.
Good afternoon, Jos Yomek, 25-year resident of the Village of Islands. Probably is older than some of you guys put together. Anyway, I come out of the engineering world, and just for your information, in engineering, the first 5% of the project determines the last 90% of the project. And the reason I'm talking about that is because this is the first 5% of your term. If you don't get this right, it's going to be screwed up for the next 90%. Plain words. That's the way life is. Anyway, Manager Cole, thank you for all your work. Thanks for selling those cars we didn't need, okay? Also, regarding the remark about the sun properties, last summer, when you had your lobbyists in here, I caught them as they were leaving. I said, how come you guys don't do anything about the sun properties? He says, because the village never asked us to.
Well, I'm going to.
And you're going to. Hooray for you. Because they say, we do what they tell us to do. They didn't tell us to do it. So, basically, remember Pogo? You're all old enough to remember Pogo? He said, remember, we met the enemy, and it's us. Okay? So, the last thing I was going to mention is the concept of government. I think we need to figure out what we're really trying to do. And if you go to Wikipedia, and I've passed out copies here, the council management government, which is we are, and Mr. Attorney, are we wrong? We are council management, is a form of local government used for municipalities in the United States, blah, blah, blah. It's used in roughly 40% of American cities. The council manager system is similar to a typical governments of publicly traded corporations. Remember the fast 5%? Under the form of an elected governing body, you guys, usually called a city council, you guys, okay, is responsible for the legislative functions as establishing policy, passing local ordinances, voting appropriations, and developing an overall vision. Anybody want to work on the vision? Maybe? It'd be kind of nice. Okay? Similar to a corporate board of directors. The council or commission appoints a city manager to oversee the administrative operations, that's you, Mr. Cole, okay, implement its policies and advise it. The manager position is similar to that of a corporate chief executive, again, back to business, appointed by the board of directors, you guys. The position of mayor represents the type of legislative body is a largely ceremonial title. Sorry, you're largely ceremonial. Okay? And may be selected by the council from amongst its members or elected in that large council. So, it's like you. Remember, you're a non-executive chairperson. Interesting. And again, Mr. Attorney, if this is wrong, then we ought to look at this thing and look at our rules again, because this is fairly, if we're doing things that don't go to this, we're violating a lot of things. So, basically, remember, the manager must be responsible and hired by and dismissed by only by the entire council, not one individual such as the mayor or chairperson. Anyway, I brought this up because sometimes you've got to go back to go. And as I said before, the first 5% screws up the last 90%. Here we are, first 5%. The challenge falls in your court. Remember the Pogo, the enemy, and it's us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Marnie?
Yeah, we're having a little issue with the timer, so I'm running it. You got it? Okay. Never mind.
Technology.
Next up is Van Cadenhead.
Good evening. I'm Van Cadenhead, and I'm sorry once again that the public is not being allowed to speak to Sunset Drive. They were in the previous discussion allowed to speak to Sunset Drive, and then then Mayor Pender decided that was all the public comment that we were going to get. So, I guess we're in the same place now. You just don't want any public comment. And my, my comment about Sunset Drive is semantics, because you're talking about a vessel exclusion zone, when in my opinion, you should be talking about a no-anchor zone, which would allow someone who's in a bonefish skiff with a party to pole that place. You're, you're cutting out a large portion of really good fishing area, which is historical. All along Seaux Beach and Sunset Drive has been historically a good place to fish. And this kind of ordinance or resolution is not being well thought out because it would exclude our, our fishing guides from, from that area, which is, you know, historically a place where tarpon and bonefish have been caught for many, many years. In addition, just the way that, that this business is being conducted here in the, in the village, it seems to be that, that things are being decided before we ever get into this room. It seems to me that there is some kind of, I don't know if you backstage collusion or what you would want to call it, but we had an agreement with, with the previous council for 104 BPAS units, and, and because of the fact the council changed, and then we, we were discussing 250 BPAS units, which we settled on 200, which is double what the first council said. Now, the only way, reason that happened, because it was outside the law, you have to wait six months, is because you all were able to, to vote with three votes for a waiver of that, and vote and get the 200 units. Well, I see the same thing happening here with Mr. Cole's contract. There's nothing wrong with Mr. Cole. Mr. Cole has been an exemplary employee, and he's shown himself to be an honest broker of, of the village's power that we've given him. And, and all of a sudden, he's being forced to resign. And I'm going to talk to that in Tab 7 to a, to a greater extent. But just the, the technique that was used, or is used, he was made to resign, and yet it says in his contract that if he resigns, he's not going to get a severance package. Well, he's going to get a severance package. And I want to know how he came to get that severance package, not in front of the public, and not with the, the discussion among you people in front of the public.
Okay, Van, I got it. Time's up.
Yeah, you got it, but you, but what you got is a government that works on moral turpitude.
Okay.
And this is not worthwhile.
I guess you're, you're just not going to listen, are you, about being rude? Marnie?
Okay, next up is Diane Harbaugh.
Hi again, everybody. Diane Harbaugh, resident Alamoada. I just wanted to mention a few things from a few meetings, just to kind of voice my opinion. That's why I'm here. I want to commend Sheriff Ramsey for coming up here and speaking to the crosswalks and the red lights, and I thank him so much for making it so apparent that we really don't need them and shouldn't have them. They, the DOT started by saying we're going to get right turn lanes without asking, because things are slow. And then they come the next month and tell us we're going to put up red lights to slow things down. So, maybe they need to spend a little time together, those two talking. It was interesting what you said, Van, because one of the things that I wanted to remind everybody on the council is that we already have an ordinance in place for no wake within 300 feet of an improved shoreline within the Village of Alamoada. And one of our committee members came up with the idea that maybe we just include or anchoring on those buoys that are already existing, on an ordinance that is already existing, and include that so that you can't anchor within that 300 feet. Solves a problem holistically for the village, but it may not be the answer. But just once again, there are answers out there. And then Sharon, I know, you know I love you, but the parking in front of the condos. So, we brought up the parking in front of the condos at the last meeting, and, you know, they want to put parking out in the median, between the old road and the new road, and they're willing to pay for it and maintain it and all of that. But once again, you're blowing up the balloon, because now you've blown up the balloon for those people. And then pretty soon, over here at Legoland, they're going to want you to do it for them in the median between the old road and the new road. And so, it kind of turns into the same thing we got at nearshore water. So, that's, that's, you know, they bought those places knowing how many parking spots they got, and I'm sorry. But it's just, it's a thought.
Yeah, I appreciate.
That's kind of the way I thought. So, thank you very much, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you, Diane.
Marnie?
Next up is Elizabeth Jolyn.
Hello, Elizabeth Jolyn, Alamoada resident. I want to start by saying thank you very much for your service. I know that this is not an easy job. I wanted to speak briefly about what I think is a perception problem that this council is having, having. is having. We have an agenda here tonight with a lot of questions, that brings up a lot of questions. You're gonna be receiving a severance, or, excuse me, a resignation from our manager tonight, and nowhere on here is there any discussion about what are your next steps? You're talking about future meetings, like you've got, you're giving directions, you're planning, who's gonna be in charge? Now, why isn't that an emergency item that you're, that you have on this agenda? Where is that? It makes me think maybe you've already have a plan for who's gonna step in for that manager's position. I think it makes a lot of people think that maybe that discussion has already happened. And maybe it hasn't. I hope that we speak about that tonight. I know that everyone here is doing their best, but it looks like a lot of work has been done outside of the sunshine. It's a foundation of trust that we have with our community, and it is alarming to me. In the meantime, Mr. Cole, I wanna thank you for your service. Again, I think our town has benefited greatly from your service. It concerns me deeply that we, as a community, have no idea what has gone on since our last meeting. And really, I hope you all can shed some light on that. And thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Buddy wants to say something.
Hey, John, can you or Allison help out? I've been talking to you, and I've been talking to Allison for two weeks, for a fact, and I think every one of us have been called by our attorneys about the situation that she's just talking about, okay? So, help me understand that, you know, and I don't know who we're gonna put in place yet, that what she just said. Okay? So, can you shed some light for the public, you or Allison, that, you know, you guys are the people that we can talk to?
Correct. You guys are not allowed to speak with each other, which I think you all know.
That's right. And that's what's being insinuated, and I got phone calls about that today. And I know nothing about what these people are talking about, 'cause I've only talked to Ms. Smith and you.
And in terms of next steps, my, what I was going to suggest today, I mean, I think that, I mean, this is a little premature, 'cause we haven't gotten to Agenda Item 7 yet.
Okay.
But assuming there is a vacancy in the manager position, then yes, you need to get an interim or an acting manager in place. I would stress, strenuously stress that it happen no later than Thursday, because the next time you all meet is not again until February, and sometimes getting special meetings together is difficult. But there is real work that needs to be done, and there's a real reason that you need a manager. We saw it the last time. So, you know, and, I mean, I would highly suggest that you all have that discussion. I'm not aware of that discussion taking place yet. I anticipated that it would happen, at least the start of it tonight, and maybe have a decision. Like I said, my recommendation is to make some sort of decision on an acting or an interim no later than Thursday, 'cause we're all gonna be back here again on Thursday. But yeah, that was gonna be my suggestion, is do it as soon as possible.
Because these are some pretty strong accusatory things that they're saying about us, like Ms. Jolen just said, you know? And people are assuming and they're speculating, but I just want the truth, John. I mean, I wanna know, you know, because I know that I've spoke to you and I spoke to Allison, so.
I mean, I can say I'm not aware of any, any plan in place yet as to who would fill those shoes. I'm not aware of it.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I wanted John to clarify something.
Hopefully, that clarifies the insinuation that there is some connection between other things.
Thank you.
Marnie?
Next up is Betsy Bullard.
Hi, Betsy Bullard, Alamoada resident. And first, I wanna say that I concur 100% with Diane Harbaugh's comments. I thought they were very well put together. I would like to address this same thing with the city manager. I was out of town for the holidays, and I come home, and I see all the news about oh-so-many things with our new council. And I really, really don't have words. You talk about accusations, all I can do is make assumptions, as in, "I've been to this movie before?" The majority of the council, of our new council? Sorry? You know, I got nothing for ya. There are words in our language that I can't use with some of this that's going on, and that is integrity, being forthright and open and honest. This is what I am assuming from what I have read in the public arena. And all I can assume is that our majority of our council is throwing us under the bus again. And I don't like it. I see no integrity. I see no honesty here from some of you. And it's come to the point that I don't think I wanna live in this community anymore, and that's very sad. The whole thing is absolutely heartbreaking to me. So, take it for whatever you will. That's what I've been doing, is taking it from what I can gather, because there has been no information from you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. Thanks. I appreciate your job. Marnie?
Thank you, ma'am. Next is Roland Moore.
Roland Moore, Lower Matacumbi Key. I've been a resident here for some 30 years, and I wanna talk briefly about Sunset Drive, which is a very hot issue. And as a former chair of the Lower Matacumbi Key Homeowners Association for Sunset Drive in Iroquois, I have represented some 120 members important to preserve our homes and our streets, starting from the 1990s when we incorporated to date. My major concern is now protecting Sunset Drive beach and considering a new vehicle or vessel exclusion zone and establish a safe swim zone similar to Port Antigua, where the village was overwhelmed last year with some, as many as 100 boats anchoring and destroying the vegetation through damage to the environment, birds and marine life and shore protection. As previously advised to the village pursuant to Florida statutes, the village has the authority to create certain boating restricted areas in order to protect the dozens of village residents from the interference of boaters anchoring and using our beach. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Roland. Marnie?
Next is Beth Camenstein.
Hi, my name is Beth Camenstein. I'm a resident of Alamoada. I wanted to thank Rob for his service. He has been, for me, one of the most dynamic village managers we've ever had, somebody who actually was concerned about my voice, what I was thinking, gave me the time of day, and I am so really saddened by this abrupt upheaval of our government. To me, by firing him without public discussion creates a distrust in the way our government is supposed to work. And this action really gives the appearance of a coordinated effort to make profound changes in, without our input. It reminds me a lot of when, in the early days of our incorporation and the early days of the village, because the only people who were against self-determination and self-government were those who were profiting from the old way of doing business. And I'm not talking about finances here or any of that. It's just an appearance of things. Because it was the garbage men who really put an effort into working against the efforts of all of us to make our village government as it is. And it was the arrogance of Mr. Carter, really, who wouldn't even bid on a new contract with our government because he didn't think he needed to. So, it's with that that I come to you to say, "You need to be doing this all in front of us, everything that happens." I am so deeply upset that you are making it impossible for this man who has only done wonderful things for our village to not be able to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Marnie?
Thank you. Next up is Joe Wishmeyer.
Mayor and council, so far in just three meetings, this council has, one, listened to an agenda item bought by an ordinary citizen, since how council members hadn't even been sworn in. Two, reheard and reversed a decision made by previous council against proper protocol of waiting six months or council members on the winning side bringing the motion. Agreed to add 56 more hotel units to the Islander Resort, even though that exceeds the six units per acre provided by code, and now replacing another village manager after less than one year. During your campaigns, you talked about uniting our community and renewing confidence in council members. Again, on Thursday, you will be hearing more land use issues, making more decisions even before our new comp plan and LDRs are completed. What is the big rush? Why do we have to rush into things now? Let's take it easy. With all of these questionable decisions in only three meetings, how is that going to restore confidence and unify our community? Another example is when you take three separately noticed items in hearings and combine them into only one and only give three minutes of public testimony for all three crucial items. That's only one minute per item. Then we listen to council ramble on and on about all the facts, without all the facts being presented by witnesses who have some facts due to time restrictions. For last 25 years since incorporation, there was no time limit on pertinent information until recently. Why not get all of the facts before you make a decision? You are all elected to represent the entire community and our delicate ecosystem, not just a few developers, looking to make money. It is time for you to start demonstrating your responsibilities now. It is my understanding that the consent agenda is for matters which may be handled and implemented without necessarily for discussion. I don't know who is responsible for making and approving the agenda, but how in good conscience can you put the replacement of another village manager on the consent agenda? Do you feel it is not important? Has it just become so routine, or is there a backdoor deal already in place? You should all pull this item from the consent agenda to give us a chance to talk about it as to have further discussion. All of this, remember, took place in only three meetings. Lord, help us.
Marnie, who's next, please?
Next up is John Wallace.
Listening, my name is John Myers. Listening to all these comments, your job is not an easy job, and I congratulate you on your patience and time and work and effort here. So, I've been a resident of Sunset Drive for over 45 years, raising six kids, all attended local schools, and presently, two of our sons, with seven of our 14 grandkids, attend local schools. The reason I say that is because I'm on Sunset Drive and has a beach, and they love to come there every weekend. Now, as far as Peter's saying that it's gonna take quite a while or not quite a while, unless we start pushing the button now, and we cannot please all the people all the time. So, instead of going into a lot of information about what's happened over the last few years, you pretty well know that there's a lot more boats coming every year. So, in order to try to curtail that, if we did have a safe swim zone, but we don't need it all year, we only need it certain times, on holidays, there's designated times when there's more and more boats coming. So, I'd like to propose that we create the swim zone, or then with an addendum, that marker boys can be removed. What's that?
It's on.
It's on. Keep going.
Go ahead, John.
It turned off for a second, now it's back on.
It's on, back on?
Yes.
Okay. An alternative suggestion is create an addendum that marker boys can be removed, 'cause we don't need them there all winter. And in the summertime, there's some weekends that we don't need them there either, to allow kayaking and sport fishermen to fish closer to shore. But the reason people come there is because of the sandbar. They go to, they go to different places where there are sandbars, like Port Antigua has a bit of a beach, but then they're intruding on those beach owners. But for us, it's the safety swim zone area that we need. So, oh, the other thing also is, on June, I believe it was July 9th, it was brought up, tax dollars, let them put their money where their mouth is comment, because they said it's gonna cost a lot of money for taxpayers to pay for it. So, tax dollars to pay for a swim zone have been raised in response to that comment I just made. To alleviate burden to taxpayer expenditures, residents will cover the cost to purchase and install the swim zone marker boys necessary to protect the safety of the public. Also, John Pistorino is on our street. He has over 70 employees and very well-known with FEMA and all the other agencies. So, he said, "As an engineer, I will assist my fellow property owners to apply for permits and designing the necessary marker system that will limit the anchoring of boats in such close proximity on the beach." So, he's gonna cover the expense for the permitting and drawings. So, it helps a bit, so it's not gonna be a burden on the taxpayer.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Marnie?
Thank Mr. Pistorino.
Okay, next up is John Wallace.
I hope you forgive me. I wanna change the topic a little bit. I'd like to talk about taxes, specifically my own. For the period of about the last 10 years, the village portion of my property taxes have gone up 85%. And so, I was a little dismayed after paying my taxes a couple weeks ago, that I got a survey with potentially 35 projects that were gonna increase my taxes probably severely, if even only three of them go forward, as in the survey. And I think that one of the largest responsibilities of a board like yours, and I was an elected official for 13 years on a similar board up and way up north, so I know what it's like being on your side of it. But I think one of your biggest responsibilities is to the taxpayer. And I'd like to just discuss with you three things that I think that this survey failed to take into account as far as the taxpayers is concerned. And the first one is that nowhere in this survey is there a checkbox to do nothing. And doing nothing is as valid as doing anything, whether it's three projects, two projects, or one project. Some people may wanna do nothing. Some people may feel that Founders Park is fine the way it is. Some people may feel that Founders Park is fine the way it is for 7,000 people, right? There's 7,000 residents. In fact, according to the census estimates, the population, residents in Iomara has actually decreased by about 130 people over the last three years. So is what we have enough? I happen to think it is. So that's one thing that I think this survey failed to do was to offer me the opportunity to say, do nothing. And had I been there, I wouldn't have to be here tonight, and you wouldn't have to listen to me tonight. The second thing was the issue of fees. I can't tell you how distasteful I find it, that the government would tax me for some new enhancement, whatever it is, and then consider charging me a fee on top of that to use it. I find that distasteful, and I hope you folks don't ever take that approach. If you want to fee non-residents, I have no problem with that, but I'm a taxpayer. I'm a resident. I don't expect that to happen to me. And the third thing, and the last thing I want to bring up, is that this survey sought input from non-residents and visitors. And I fail to see the relevance of what they think they should have at Founders Park. It should be up to the taxpayer. I don't see that I'm responsible, and I don't believe this government is responsible for the entertainment of non-residents and visitors. And so I'd urge you to take all those three things into consideration when you finally decide about this method. And I understand this is a master plan. I understand the whole concept there. The only thing is, four or five years from now, when you folks aren't on the board, some other board is going to hold up the master plan and say, well, this is a master plan. This is what we intended. This is what they intended. So it's very important that you take, really give the taxpayer the most credence in anything you do with this survey. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Mr. Wallace, before you go, can you just state your name and address for the record?
John Wallace, Plantation Key. Thanks.
Thank you. Marnie?
Next up is Joni Fulmer.
Joni Fulmer, Isle Marata resident, 42 years before it was a village, since it's been a village. I want to thank the council for putting some effort here into representing us, but I have a, I have a big problem in the fact that I don't feel like we as citizens are represented by the entire council. I knew nothing until today about this thing with the village manager, and I get emails from him all the time that tell me what's going on in the village. I don't know that I'm the brightest light bulb in the chandelier, but it would seem to me. I get emails from one council member, and I feel like that council member might have an interest in what I have to say or what my needs are as a citizen and the needs of all the other citizens. And some things you may vote on that I don't agree with, but I'd like to be represented by all of you. And I think we've got a lot of business to do here, this whole comp plan thing, and why are we spending time and money diverting our attention to yet again firing and hiring another village manager when you've got work to do that represents our community? So I would implore you to consider representing all of us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Marnie?
Next up is Barry Ray.
Good evening, council. Barry Ray, Isle Marata. 27 years now. I thought I'd be here for three to five. Isle Marata adopted me. So thank you all for being up there. It's hard. Don, Steve, it's new for you. The other people are all old hacks by now, right? So Debbie, thanks for coming back. Thanks for all of you being up there. It is hard. This is an amazing amount of information that just came in here, and it's got to be devastating to try and juggle all those things at once. And there's a lot of very important things coming up. One of the most important things that I think about is our comp plan. And in that comp plan, one of the major priorities in the beginning of that comp plan is about protecting the ecosystems here. We did an inclusionary zoning ordinance. Debbie and I were part and parcel to that. And it's one of the proudest pieces of legislation this village has ever done. And in that piece of legislation, we did scientific analysis where we equated every square foot that gets built and expanded, and what that means in terms of demands for service people and essential people to live here. And so we account for that. Residential has a certain price per square foot when you want to expand, as well as retail space does or industrial space. And that means I get to hire another percentage of a firefighter or a policeman or whatever. And this is important. We don't take our ecosystem with the same seriousness. And over the years, when I first got here, that was actually '86 when I came down on spring break, I parked the car at mile marker 95. I didn't pull over, I just parked it there, right in the middle of the highway, got out of the car with my two buddies and said, yeah, can't see a car in either direction. You can't cross the street during spring break now. And because of that, we've gone from relatively very minimal impact of automobiles going through the Keys to the point that we're putting over 500,000 pounds of rubber tire in the water, in the nearshore waters every year. There's an article that came out about Seattle where the amount of salmon they're killing because of the rubber tire particles going into the water. If you don't think we're doing the same thing here, you need to think again. We're all very sensitive to the ecosystem, but we seem to ignore it. We really do. I told a story on the radio a few days ago, a few weeks ago, about a backwater guide that I've known since he was a child, coached him. And here he was golfing golf balls into the bay, thinking it was harmless, having a good time, went and stopped. So I called FWP on him, or FWC on him, said, go talk to him, inform him. You know, I didn't want to get a ticket. I want him to learn, this is bad. We all need to take it upon ourselves. All right, I'm going to end right now, but I am going to make one comment. I think most of you were on the council this last year when I got up here and we changed out village managers. And I made a comment. I said, we're the only municipality in the Keys that cannot keep a village manager. All right? Or Vic resigned. Ted, you let go. Ted, Ted helped create this, the most popular thing we do in our village regularly. And now we're going to lose a guy that I met, and I think he's got genuine great technical knowledge and genuine integrity. I really like the guy, even though we disagreed on some things. All right? So it's hard to keep good people, but it's important. And it's important to understand it's about people. It's not about the instantaneous persuasion. We all have to be tolerant. All right? It's a difficult thing to do, but ask yourself how you would feel in issues, moved down here, did this, and now we're asking, we're done with you, it's time to go. That is not right, folks. And that's why people, Key West has 20-year managers, and Marathon has George Garrett for how many years now, and so on and so forth. So please, think about what we're doing this evening. Take a pause. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Marnie?
Okay, we have one last comment. It's the person on Zoom. Give me just a sec to get in there. Okay, caller with the last four digits, 4844, you've got three minutes. Go ahead.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Thank you very much for taking the time. My name is Hugh Cassiano, and I live at 257 Sunset Drive. That's at the last point. John Meyer is my wonderful neighbor that's there, and I'm calling you from Scottsdale, Arizona. First of all, I want to thank you for your methodical approach in making decisions there. I'm a member of several volunteer boards myself, and it seems like a thankless job. So it is important to note that you spending the time is definitely a necessary endeavor, right? And it is appreciated. The gentleman with the black hat that was commenting earlier, fishing on Sunset Drive, at the end of the pier, if you look at the map, that is the inclusion area, I believe it does leave an area there where most people go to fish, right? And I don't think that, you know, 10 feet of fishing space compared to the entire ocean makes a big difference in the tours. The other person I was talking about, if you close one area, they go to another, where do they go? Well, maybe they go to Papa Joe's, maybe they go to the Postcard Inn, and maybe they go to places where they buy products and create revenue that actually helps our town rather than just the alternative. In addition to that, we have areas like the Alligator Reef and the Fills that we pay for to maintain for these types of, they're designed for that type of experience, not the backyard of my house. This year, we did not go to the house. As a matter of fact, after the last holiday, we hit the shutters and left because I can't fight with my wife anymore about keeping my six and nine-year-old kid inside on holidays because boats are speeding by, dogs are left without leash, human feces washing up on the beach, everything from police being called and irresponsible motoring. Didn't gamble on that when I spent millions of dollars on a resident. By the way, my family owns four houses in the Marata area, and they used to congregate in Sunset Beach because I'm on the water with the beautiful beach. And I'm not going to apologize for, you know, I was born and raised in Miami, and I came back to this town because I love Florida, and I wanted my kids to experience what I experienced, which is the close contact with nature when you're a young person, not people that are revealing themselves, nudity and, you know, pardon the language, but the first penis my little girls had seen was a guy who was urinating off the side of a boat. So we don't go back there. My house is locked up, cars are locked up, everything's there, and as John can attest, we have not been back because it's just not worth it. I appreciate your consideration, and, you know, everyone having an opinion that doesn't live there doesn't really have the opinion because they're not there every day. And unfortunately, this has become such a problem that it's kept me from coming home. So thank you for your time, and thank you for volunteering.
Thank you very much. Marnie?
There's no one else.
Okay, public comment is now closed. I guess we move to the consent agenda. John?
Yes, that's correct, Madam Mayor. We're into the consent portion of the agenda. These items are of a routine nature, and council members have reviewed these items in advance and sought the advice of staff as they felt necessary. There'll be one vote on the consent items, which today are items tabs four through six. If anyone would like to pull an item from consent, he or she should state so now.
Go ahead.
Tab seven.
He said four through six.
Okay.
I got you.
I caught that, too.
Buddy, you good? You guys good? Okay, go ahead, John.
We would need to open it up for public comment on the consent items.
Anybody have public comment on the consent items four through six? Not seven.
I don't have anyone signed up for four through six.
Okay.
So we would just need a motion on the consent.
Does council have anything they want to say? Four through six? Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve four through six.
Is there a second?
A second.
Marnie, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Deb Gillis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Don Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Steve Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Buddy Pinder?
Yes.
And Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, John, do we go to tab seven now?
Yep. Tab seven is a resolution of the Village Council of Isle Marata Village of Islands, Florida, approving the separation agreement and general release between the village and Robert Cole, authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement and providing for an effective date. This is a separation agreement between the village and Mr. Cole. As it states, the terms of the agreement are set forth. My office, more specifically Allison, worked with Mr. Cole's attorney to reach this agreement and to prepare it with terms that I understand he's agreeable to, and so it's presented for the council for your consideration. I know Mr. Cole has a, does have a resignation letter that he said that he would, if it's the council's pleasure, he would be willing to read that as well.
Rob, would you like to read the letter?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I've addressed it to Dear Mayor Mahoney and Village Council Members. As an International City County Management Association member and local government professional, I am dedicated to the highest ideals of honor and integrity in ethically executing my roles and responsibilities as village manager, as each of you are as elected officials. As the Isle Marata Charter recognizes, professional management is essential to effective, efficient, and accountable local government dedicated to serving the best interests of all community members faithfully and with a high degree of public transparency. Reflecting on this past year, I've enjoyed serving as Isle Marata's village manager, having helped to cultivate a variety of positive organizational and community outcomes as partially highlighted in my weekly council update ahead of the holiday period. Our exceptional staff have successfully risen to myriad challenges amidst many competing claims on their time and energy. Considering the year ahead, however, I regret to communicate to you, my staff, and the Isle Marata community that I have decided to resign from my position as village manager, subject to the terms and conditions incorporated into the separation agreement on tonight's agenda. This was a difficult choice for me to make, but it is the right one for me and my family. As I turn the page in my decades-long municipal career, I want to thank everyone who warmly welcomed me to the Isle Marata community and organization. Perhaps our paths in life may cross again.
Finally, please know that your outstanding village staff will continue working hard every day to make sure your quality of life is commensurate with the reasons you chose to make this island paradise your home. Thank you, Rob. Do we wait for Buddy, or?
It's up to you. I mean, we do have to take public.
There he is.
That answered that question.
So do we go to public comment now, John?
Yeah, you can go to public comment now if you'd like, or you can discuss, but at some point, we do need to open it up for public comment.
Okay, so what's your pleasure, you guys?
I'd like to say something.
Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, when I decided to run for this position, I ran on a promise to the voters that I would fight against overdevelopment and attempt to ensure transparency in everything we do as council. A governing body that creates, enacts, and enforces policy should serve the community's best interests, consistent with the village's stated mission, to protect the residents' rights to quiet enjoyment of life, to plan for enhancing our village character, to preserve our community, its people, natural resources, and pride, to provide basic services to support our quality of life. I asked to remove item at tab seven from the consent agreement agenda, which involves a resolution to approve a severance of employment to village manager Rob Cole. I did so because I am troubled by how the matter of severing Rob's relationship with the village came about, and because I know that Rob likes his job and was not seeking to resign. From everything I've heard before this matter suddenly was presented to me on December 18th, I understood that Rob was doing his job well. I had no knowledge then, and have no knowledge now, of any conduct by Rob that would justify coercing him to resign in return for several weeks of severance. I was not in favor of the proposal to offer Rob severance when it was initially presented to me by village attorney, and I'm not in favor of it now for the following reasons. The subject of offering severance in return for Rob's resignation was first presented to me by village attorney John Quick in a phone call on December 18th. John called me about an email he had previously sent to council members on December 17th. The email concerned a written complaint made by a village employee against Rob. Because of IT issues and setting up my email account, I hadn't received or reviewed John's email with the employee's complaint attached prior to his call. I explained that to John, and he forwarded a copy of his email with the complaint to me as we were on the call. John gave me a brief summary of the email. He then said he was conducting a poll of the council members about whether they were in favor of offering Rob a severance package in return for his resignation. He said he would be communicating the results of the poll to Rob depending on the vote. John then asked if I was in favor of offering Rob a severance package in return for his resignation. I told him I was not in favor of such action because I knew of no basis to suggest that Rob be forced out of his position, and because I believe every employee in the village, no matter their position, is entitled to due pro- matter their position, is entitled to due process to address the merit or lack of merit to a complaint against them before being disciplined, terminated, or coerced coerced to resign. At the time of John's call on December 18th, I had no knowledge or evidence, still have no knowledge or evidence, that would justify criticizing Rob's job performance, much less a request for his resignation in return for a severance package. Consequently, I was extremely uncomfortable with John's request to state whether I was in favor of making such an offer, and I told him so. I was aware of the fact that Rob had responded to a rumor that he had some responsibility for the decision made in Tallahassee to cancel the funding for the Isla Marata Fire Department fireboat. However, Rob submitted a detailed factual response that refuted the rumor in an email dated December 12, 2024 that was provided to council members. Rob's statement completely dispelled, to my satisfaction, the idea that he had anything to do with the boat funding cancellation. Among other things, Rob pointed out that the Isla Marata boat allocation was not only the only fireboat allocation vetoed. Another allocation for a fireboat in Marco Island was also vetoed. Additionally, Rob noted that millions of dollars in fire and public safety funding vetoes were part of an overall budget reduction effort. During our initial phone conversation on December 18th, I told John I objected to being polled about my position on a matter as important as terminating another village manager less than a year after he accepted the position. John explained that he had the unenviable task of contacting me and the other council members individually to find out whether there was support for submitting a severance proposal to Rob in exchange for his resignation. I do not know, and John did not say whether he had been asked to conduct the poll by one of my colleagues on the council, or if he decided to initiate the poll himself. I do not know why John didn't simply suggest an investigation be conducted into the employee complaint before suggesting that Rob be offered severance, if the employee's complaint was actually the reason for suggesting severance in the first place. I suspect that it is not, but that it may be a convenient excuse for the current effort to force Rob to resign. In any event, however, I don't know why John didn't suggest that there be a meeting of the full council in public session, if permissible and appropriate, in an executive session to discuss such a critical matter, rather than conduct a poll of the council to offer severance in return for Rob's resignation. Assuming that it was the employee's complaint that precipitated the proposal to Rob's severance in exchange for his resignation, I told Rob that I was not in favor of such an offer. There hadn't been any investigation of the complaint or discussion among council members about Rob's conduct that would justify such action. On its face, the employee's complaint did not appear to me to come anywhere near justifying a severance proposal, so I told John no to offering severance. John informed me that I was the last council member and that my vote, my no vote, was in the minority. I asked if the minority was three to two or four to one. John told me it was four to one. I also expressed my concern to John about how I could trust that information that he was giving me with the same information that he gave, was the same information he gave other council members. John insisted that he wouldn't jeopardize his law license by not providing the same information to all council members. On December 19th, I had a chance to do a thorough review of the email John sent to council members on December 17th regarding the employee's complaint. I found it interesting in his email, John mentioned, and I quote, "This scenario is not addressed in the village's personnel manual. When not specifically addressed, the normal procedure in these situations is to speak with each of you individually to discuss the village, the village's options going forward and provide potential legal recommendations on how to proceed." At no time since our initial phone conversation on December 18th to this date, however, uh, at no time, uh, however, did John provide me with any options or legal recommendations beyond asking me for my vote in favor or against offering Rob severance in return for his resignation. I was basically presented with a yay or nay proposition. I don't know if John suggested any options or legal recommendations in his conversations with other council members. However, I do know that other options and legal recommendations were not suggested to me, and perhaps more importantly, at no time since December 18th did John or any other attorney at his firm express an opinion to me that they considered the employee's complaint sufficiently serious to justify an immediate offer of severance in exchange for his resignation. John also contacted me by phone again on December 19th. This time, it was in connection with conducting another poll of council members.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
No, I listen.
This is, can I?
Oh, a hundred percent. I didn't expect him to go on for this long, so I apologize to everybody.
This is absolutely inappropriate that this is just an attempt to smear my name. I did not poll anyone. In fact, Councilmember Friedman, you specifically asked me to tell you what each of the other council members told me, and I told you, I cannot do that because that would violate sunshine. There was no polling going on. I do not know what the purpose of this statement is. Manager Ra, uh, Cole has tendered his resignation. There is a severance agreement that is before you all. The statements that you are reading are incorrect. They are absolutely incorrect.
You'll have time to correct me.
I'm sorry, pardon me.
You'll have time to correct me.
I, I am not going to violate.
Let him finish.
Stop yelling out, please. The community knows.
I would like you to stick to the facts, and I will wait for you.
Thank you.
The real facts.
In my mind, this was a matter that should not have been addressed initially in a discussion. In my mind, this was a matter that should have been addressed initially in a discussion among the full council at a public meeting, if possible, uh, or if possible, in executive session. Since I was the only council member opposed to forcing Rob's resignation, I told Rob that, I told John that if Rob were to be offered a severance package, it should be for the maximum amount, which John stated would be 20 weeks' pay. In a subsequent phone call with John's associate, Allison Smith, on December 19th, she informed me that a decision had apparently been made to offer the village manager severance of approximately six weeks. I asked how the other four council could possibly have come up with the same number of weeks for the severance offer without speaking to one another. Allison told me she could not say because discussing her conversations with other council members would violate sunshine law. Following these communications with John and Allison, I reviewed the village council orientation materials provided to me at the orientation meeting of new council members held in November. The materials included a memo prepared by Y.S. Sirota Law Firm with the title, "Summary of Florida Sunshine Law and Public Records Act." The memo contains a bullet point provision with the heading, quote, "No meetings through use of intermediaries," unquote. After reading it, I became concerned that the, quote, "Polling of council members about Rob, offering Rob severance might violate the intermediary's provision of the sunshine law," which reads as follows. "The sunshine law is violated if a person who is not a council member acts as a liaison between council members through which a de facto discussion is conducted upon some subject matter on which foreseeable action will be taken by the council." After reviewing this provision, I sent John and Allison an email on the evening of December 19th. My email reiterated I had no knowledge of any facts that would merit asking the village manager for his resignation, and I informed John and Allison of my concern about a possible violation of intermediary provision contained in the sunshine law as a result of the polling process John had used to determine if there was a majority of council members in favor of offering job, Rob, severance in return for his resignation. It appeared to me from the language of the intermediary provision of the sunshine law that polling council members to find out whether they were in favor of offering Rob a severance package in exchange for his resignation involved a subject matter, quote, "For which foreseeable action would be required by the village council," close quote. Obviously, taxpayer funds would have to be expended to fund the severance being offered. So in my email to John and Allison, I asked the following question. "Is it possible that the decision to offer an employee severance on behalf of the council without any prior discussion among the council members, based on each council member's conversation with you as an intermediary, might violate the sunshine law?" Unquote. John responded to me in an email on December 20th informing me that he did not serve as intermediary because he did not convey any discussion between council members. John reiterated that he would not risk throwing his career away for anyone or any client that, and that no sunshine laws were violated. And in response to my comment about not having any information that would support Rob's termination, John informed me that as far as the reasons why other council members might wish to sever the relationship with Rob, I would need to ask them for their reasons at an open public meeting. Out of concern for that the termination of Rob's employment be addressed by the full council in a public meeting as soon as possible, I also informed John and Allison that I would be asking Mayor Mahoney to schedule a special meeting of the council to address the subject of severing Rob's employment with the village. The next day, December 20th, I sent an email to the village clerk, Marnie McGrath. My email requested a special meeting of the council for two purposes. The first purpose was for a discussion of matters related to the village manager's employment. The second purpose was to discuss making a request to the village attorney to provide counsel with proposed alternative procedures to address, investigate, and attempt to resolve village employee complaints, including those involve the village manager, before requiring the council's involvement. My concern was this: The village has terminated nearly 20 different village managers in 20 years. Is the council going to terminate village managers simply because a village employee may lodge a complaint that has not been investigated, much less verified, and for which the village manager has not been afforded an opportunity to respond? And the village attorney has not provided any opinion to the council of what would justify a termination? Marnie sent a blind copy email to council members on December 20th asking about their availability for a special meeting. Marnie also responded to my email on the same day, informing me she had contacted Sharon about my request for her to call a special meeting about Rob's employment. Marnie informed me that Sharon expressed concern about the council's availability over the holidays and suggested that the matter be brought up during this meeting. Therefore, as far as I know, there was no support for my request for a special meeting. On the afternoon of Sunday, December 22nd, I received another phone call from Allison, acting in place of John who was on holiday. She called to inform me that the proposal to offer Rob severance in return for his resignation had been accepted in principle. I again expressed my disdain for the process. Allison told me that John had consulted an ethics expert who advised that the process did not violate sunshine law. On December 23, Allison sent me a draft separation agreement attached to an email. The draft agreement provided that Rob would receive approximately three months' pay in exchange for his resignation. When I asked Allison how the number of weeks of severance pay had been determined, she said she could not answer that question because she could not disclose conversations with council members. On December 23, I received an email from HR Director Jamie Terry informing me of the required performance evaluation due for Mr. Cole. After I made a request to see all prior evaluations of Rob, she sent me two. One was from Mark Gregg, and the other was from Elizabeth Joan. Neither evaluation contained any negative feedback about Rob's work as village manager. There were no written evaluations from Buddy, Sharon, or Henry Rosenthal. I don't know if they provided oral evaluations. I received another email from Allison on December 27th, which included a revised separation agreement for Rob. She followed up that email with another email on January 3rd, 2025, which attached another revised version of the separation agreement and mentioned she would be contacting me by phone. I presumed for the purpose of asking if I had any audits or comments about the agreement, I replied by email that there was no need to call. My only concern was that Rob be indemnified from any possible litigation brought by a village employee in the future. Allison sent me back an email confirming that such indemnification was provided in the agreement. In closing, I've laid out in detail the facts as I know them to be about this matter for purposes of full transparency. I am truly troubled by how such a critically important decision as serving the employment of our village manager was made without any discussion among council members and without providing the public the opportunity to weigh in on the advisability of terminating another village manager who was hired less than a year ago and, to my knowledge, had done nothing to deserve being forced to resign. I am not a lawyer, but I did not believe when Mr. Quick, uh, first contacted me for my vote, nor do I believe now that the matter complained of by a village employee justifies the knee-jerk response of coercing our village manager to resign. There has been no investigation of the complaint. There has been no opportunity for Rob to provide a response to the complaint. When we, when did we decide that it was acceptable to terminate village managers without due process if employees should make complaints about their conduct? What kind of precedent does this set? And most importantly, from my point of view, as a newly-elected public official in a village that has experienced a revolving door of village manager hirings and firings in recent years, why is it considered acceptable to follow a process that evades the spirit, if not the letter, of the sunshine law? In my opinion, what has happened here is totally unacceptable. I know from speaking to him personally, Mr. Cole likes his job. He did not want to resign, yet a majority of the council apparently saw fit to force him to resign without due process, without any prior discussion of the merits of forcing his termination, and without any plan in place for his replacement. Is this good governance? I don't think so. Personally, I think coercing a village manager to resign without any plan in place to replace him is irresponsible. I apologize to the citizens of Isla Marata for what I see as the council's dereliction of its duty to the community. You deserve better. And to Mr. Cole, I express my serious apology for the manner in which this council has treated you. I thank you for your service to our village. You, too, deserved better. In closing, I return to Mr. Quick's advice that if I want to know the other council members' reasons for their actions, I would have to ask you at the public session. So at this meeting, I ask my fellow council members for the courtesy of their responses to the following four questions. Whose idea was it to ask the village attorney to poll the questions of offering severance to Rob? What are your reasons for wanting to sever the relationship with Rob? Why do you think it is prudent to force Rob to resign from his position when there is no plan in place for his replacement? What is your plan to replace Rob as a village manager?
All right, before John, you speak, you have so many facts so wrong, and I'm sorry. I, I'm just sorry. So, John, I'm, I'm not going to correct you right now. I'm going to let John say what he's been wanting to say, so we'll start there.
I, um, thank you, Mayor Mahoney. Honestly, the, a lot of that doesn't even warrant a response. It's woven with so many inaccuracies and factual misleading, uh, factually misleading statements. Um, the, the fact that you would use my name and insinuate on two occasions that I may have just invented this out of thin air is absurd and reckless and honestly, likely defamatory. I would absolutely, I am bound by a code of ethics, and I will not throw away my career for you, Councilmembers Friedman, I assure you. I will not throw away a career for anyone. I have worked too darn hard to get to where I am. I am not going to invent something out of thin air for no reason at all. Why? Because the day before I'm going on vacation, I decide that I want to complicate my life and invent something? Absolutely not. And the fact that you would insinuate that and recklessly throw that out there as though we, we had a member of the, of the, of the public before talk about, these are human beings up here, and we all are, and this is a difficult thing that, that, that we're discussing right now with what you brought up, but I'm a human being as well. And to insinuate that I've invented something, I'll, I'll wait for you to finish on your phone, whatever you're doing on your phone. For you to insinuate that I invented this is really insulting, and I do not appreciate it at all. So, I, I mean, I, I, I'll just, I, I will leave it at that. I, I do not want to get into anything more. I, I honestly, most of it does not warrant a response, but it, there was clearly intent behind why those things were said, and I do not appreciate it, and that was not, it was not accurate, and, and thank you, Madam Mayor and the rest of the council for, for the, the, giving me the time to, to at least say something.
Go ahead, Buddy.
I just want to remind council that, I mean, I know we just had an election, but there is supposed to be no texting from the dais, okay?
Yeah, that's true.
No texting from the dais. So, I, you know, it was going on before.
Who's texting?
Okay, I'm just saying, I'm not saying anybody in particular, but I want it to come out that we know that we're not allowed to text from here. Okay? When we're here, we're here. If you want, if you want to go to the bathroom, go outside, whoever.
Your phone's off when you're out there.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I want to say something, Steve, that you're saying, you know what? I've been here with Mr. Cole. I only, I voted only once for Mr. Cole because I, I was going to give him a shot when Mr. Gregg called him back, all right? And, and I'm going to tell you something, I have had employees and employee staff members that were going to quit. So, you know, I, you know, if we're going to, I, I just, man, and then to accuse somebody of, our attorney of the way following the law here, that's a big problem, and I'm going to tell you something, so many people in this village have untrue facts. When people come after me, you know what? I went to Tallahassee and took the facts with me, and it all got dismissed. You know, I, I mean, this, what a thankless position. What a thank, people got money in this town, they got, they, 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 they say things about being able to take a thousand-square-foot home. They try to stop somebody buys a TDR, but yet they built, take a 900-square-foot home and build 5,000 feet. That's the, that's, you know, if you live in a glass house, you shouldn't throw stones. Man, I, I tell you what, I am, I can't believe the people of Isla Marata. You know what? I see the same people want to get up here and talk and talk and talk, the Isla Marata Community Alliance, about how everything, and tell, we, we can't do anything right. I am serious as a heart attack that we can't do anything right. I, I, I don't understand this. I really don't. And then accuse our attorneys, okay, that this, as a sunshine, you know what? I think if people, put your facts, give the facts, but when you're going to lose several employees that have been here, dedicated employees that are going to, I mean, I, I mean, it's still, I'd like to know about the fireboat, Steve. I'd like to know about the fireboat. You can say Marco Island, but everybody else, and I'm going to go a couple steps further. You know what? Our sheriff's department has had issues here. Our sheriff's department has had issues here. When they can't even talk, when they, when they have the contract, okay, we can't tell them how to micromanage the sheriff's department. And I've gotten phone calls.
Okay.
Anyways, I've said, I've said what I'm saying. I, I just really can't, and, and the only two people that I talked to on this is, is John and Allison. Allison kept every, each one of us informed of what she was doing, what she, that's what we hired our attorneys for, to represent us. And I, I'm sorry that, you know, you feel that maybe that they did something violated, whatever, but, you know, is it, this, this wants me to, I, I started thinking about Roger and how somebody on a certain group wrote a letter to Dennis Ward and, and they're going to do a criminal investigation on us. I went right to Dennis and said, Alan, we didn't sign a non-disclosure agreement. We signed a non-disparagement agreement.
All right.
And you know, so, so wait, wait a minute, sure. So, and then some of, somebody that was the president of that organization is coming and telling us we signed an NDA, and I had to have Mr. Quick, not me, but Mr. Quick, tell them that this, we didn't sign a non-dispar, uh, 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 NDA, we signed a non-disparagement agreement. I, I just want to see people get their facts right. If you got your facts right, speak the truth. So, I, I, man, I'll tell you what, this, you talk about division, there's a certain group of people in this community that are causing so much division, it's crazy.
Okay.
Anyways, I said enough.
Okay.
Mayor, thank you.
So, do we want to open public comment? Does anybody want to say anything? Where do I go from here?
Um, we do need to open public comment. If nobody has anything else to say, I mean, obviously you can speak after public comment as well.
You will wait for that? Okay. Okay, we're going to go ahead and open public comment now. Do I need a bulletproof vest, Marnie? Go ahead.
First up is Van Cadenhead.
Here we go. Sure, we've got a bunch of time.
Then we will go to Sue Miller.
Sue Miller, Lower Matacumbe, representing the Alamo Rata Community Alliance. It is all about trust and perception. The trust is not there. The perception, whether it's right or wrong, it's our perception. According to Councilman Friedman, prior to Christmas, the village attorney of Wyserota polled the council as to whether you'd agree to offering a severance package to the village manager in return for his resignation. Friedman was informed there were four votes in favor. This is clearly a violation of the Florida sunshine law. I don't care what you say. Shame on the four of you, and shame on our village attorneys at Wyserota for their participation. Less than two months ago, the five of you were sworn into office, stating at the swearing in, "I do solemnly swear that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the government of the state of Florida. I will in all respect observe the charter and ordinances of Alamo Rata and will faithfully perform the duties of councilmen, so help me God." And yet, you ignore the Florida sunshine law immediately. Many of us believe that your effort to remove Mr. Cole was a plot that has been ongoing for months. That's our perception. Perhaps the next step in the plot is to rehire Mr. Yates, a more development-friendly manager, in a private executive session planned for Thursday at 4:30 PM, excluding the public from critical, critical decision-making. I believe we have been extremely fortunate to have a man of Mr. Cole's talent and integrity. Mr. Cole has demonstrated that, that he is a true professional, perhaps the best we've had and perhaps better than we deserve. Mr. Cole absolutely deserves better. With clearly having four members of council opposed to his leadership, of course, his resignation should be accepted and the already negotiating, negotiated agreement approved so he can move on to a place where his talents can be appreciated. In the past, we've had managers resign under pressure, but nothing like this. With no public discussion, even trying to hide the separation in the consent agenda? What will you do next? Yes, we elected you, but you pledged to follow the laws of the land, including the Florida sunshine law. Florida Attorney General Ashley Moody wrote an introduction to the recent sunshine law manual. "Our system of open government is a valued and intrinsic part of the heritage of our state. Each day, Floridians use these laws to inform themselves as citizens, to attend government meetings, and to review government records. As a result of these efforts, government leaders can be held accountable for their actions, and you have conducted your decision-making in the dark. Thank you, Mr. Cole, for all you have done for our community. I believe many in the community would join me in wishing you and Olga the best in the future. We'll miss you tremendously. I am literally heartbroken."
Madam Mayor, can I just, just, because it's the second time I've heard some discussion about there's, there's a connection between the executive session. It's purely a coincidence. As I mentioned before, I'm trying to bring you all up to speed, and that just happened to be the first one.
Listen, I, I have always been a supporter of the Community Alliance, and I've gotten a lot of crap from people for being friends with them, but I resent the fact that you published in a letter that this was a plot to bring back Ted Yates. Do you really think I would bring back Ted Yates? Absolutely no way. And I'm insulted that you think I would go back on a decision I stood with Henry and Elizabeth on, and that made me so upset, Sue, I have to tell you. For you guys to put facts out there that aren't even true, that was the first time I realized what he said is correct. That's not a true fact. There is no way Ted Yates has been in the discussion that I have ever been a part of or would want to be a part of. And I know Don knows that, and I know everybody up here knows how I feel, how I was treated by Ted. So, I found that extremely insulting that something was done with Ted Yates. So, I just said my piece, so. Go ahead, Marnie. Let me have another one.
Okay, next up, Van Cadenhead.
I noticed you called me as soon as I went to the bathroom. You ain't going to get rid of me quite that easy. I'm going to put some facts in front of you. I ran against Buddy Pender for the council the last time, and I called hundreds of people in this town on the phone and talked to them, and I spoke to hundreds of people in the town, in, in the Publix and whatnot, and, and as a result of that, 1,411 of them voted for me, and I really appreciate that. And I'm not going to lie to you, a lot of them told me that one of the points that, that Buddy Pender and Don Horton and Debbie Gillis were making was that as soon as they got elected into office, and also Anna Richards, as soon as they got into office and got a majority, they were going to get rid of Rob Cole and bring Ted Yates back. Now, that is a fact. Now, you can talk to, you can talk to dozens of people out there in the Coconut Telegraph. I didn't make this up, folks. I'm not making any of this up. I've never told a liar from this podium. I've never made a nickel off of this podium. And, and for, for you to try to put this man out, so maybe it's not Ted Yates. Maybe it's somebody else you have in mind who's more, more pliable and li, and viable and malleable that you want to have in, in his position. But you haven't said his name, you haven't put up any, uh, uh, method that we can have another manager. It's totally irresponsible for you to behave this way and, and put this man out who's done nothing but exemplary work for this village, and the people here know it. The people that are watching this know it. And, and once again, the, the, the moral, uh, uh, turpitude that's gone into this discussion is monumental. It's immense. It's only exceeded by the grotesque, gargantuan greed of the, of the deep pockets campaign contributors that put the four of you into office. You know, I'm, I'm really, at least the three of you, you just went along for the ride. But I'm really sorry that, that we have this particular quandary here in a time, it's, it's even more irresponsible because we have hired a firm to redo our comp plan. We have hired a good firm to, to do our LDRs. And why, in the name of heaven, would you possibly want to get rid of, of the, the best village manager we've had at this critical juncture if you didn't have some ulterior motive? If you weren't looking to turn this into the Village of Alamo Rata construction boom of 2025 and 26? Thank you so much.
Wow. Okay. Marnie?
Okay, next up is Henry Rosenthal.
I think you should all take a break. Obviously, I came to address things other than what you're addressing at the moment. I can agree with just about everybody, good or bad. I had a discussion with Mr. Cole some time ago, and I don't think I had another discussion with him, with the exception of the morning, this morning, maybe I called you. Might have been yesterday morning. And I just flat, flat-out predicted the outcome of the election and who was going to vote for who in what way. So far, my prediction is holding true. The only person that knows that for sure is Mr. Cole. Mr. Cole almost was not on the slate to be selected. Mr. Cole had a problem with his previous employer. I've never discussed that with him, but he called me at my house late one night, and he says, "Take me off the list." I said, "Sure. Good luck to you." It was either the following night or two nights later, he says, "Could I be put back on the list? I've resolved my problems." I said, "Certainly, why not?" But what the council did not know at that particular time was that the Florida legislature was about to pass a situation where if we did not choose somebody by the end of the month, we couldn't choose anybody until November. Was there any discussion about that? No. I knew it. I brought it up. I said, "Somebody has to be elected out of the three. I can work with any one of them, and I could." One person was chosen either in first or second place, but it was not Mr. Cole. But then a motion came up to select Mr. Cole. I went along with it. Why wouldn't I? I had no reason not to. I've been through a lot of managers. I'm a pretty good judge of character. I've been asked not to talk about myself, but for some unknown reason, I was the highest employer in Monroe County for years. I didn't make too many mistakes when I hired somebody. I was recently in a hospital. And the hospital came by to me and said, "Do you, do you have any recommendations for the staff? Good, bad, or indifferent?" I said, "I don't, but I'll tell you one thing. These people know how to get along at the hospital. They know how to talk to each other. The doctors, the nurses, the staff. It's remarkable. They have 12-hour shifts, if not two in a row, which is not, not in a row, that would be 24, but 12-hour shifts. And these people are happy to go to worker, to go to work." And I said to myself, "Wouldn't it be nice, before any council member took that chair, if they were deemed to do 12 hours at the hospital and see what nice people, how they talk to each other? The way we conduct this council is ridiculous. In fact, it's not ridiculous, it's damn bad. The way we talk to each other, I've been on the one end of that for somebody just to stand up and accuse me of one lie after the other." A newspaper called me for a statement, and I said, they didn't use it, and I said, "You know, throughout my life," and I've been in business for I don't know how many years, I've been here like 60 years, "Throughout my life, I've had boulders in front of me. And when I chose to go against the boulder, it was not the right thing to do. So, the last time somebody just stood up and made, made and called me names and whatever, I chose not to complicate the situation with me going against the boulder. I just plain decided to walk around it." And I, if you can give me 10 more seconds, I, I know you're anxious. I don't hold these people responsible for some of the things they say because they've been coerced, and I know that. But where did it originally start? It started when they were little kids, and they were influenced by their mother and father. Believe me, that's where it started. Once again, I was not prepared to speak to this issue, but in closing, if I could, I would have a motion to not accept Mr. Cole's resignation. And if that didn't pass, I would have another motion to put him back on the list with two or three others, if you wish, and let's get this job done. If you can find somebody better than Mr. Cole, and he's made mistakes, I've called him on the mistakes right here publicly, but not enough to give up the job, just not enough. With that, I support Mr. Cole in anything he wants to do, and I sincerely hope it's for him to remain here and do the job that he's capable of doing. With that, I'm sorry, I probably did more than five minutes or whatever. I didn't mean to do that, but...
Thank, I know.
Thank you.
Next up will be Joe Wishmeyer.
I would like to take this time to thank Mr. Cole for his unrelenting efforts to move forward on projects that seem to have stalled under previous managers. His weekly managers' report was very appreciative and informative to keep the public up to date on progress of the many projects being undertaken by the village. I certainly hope that practice continues with the next village manager. His efforts will be dearly missed. Putting this item on the consent agenda was inexcusable, and y'all should be ashamed of this action. Since incorporation 26 years ago, there have been 12 different managers hired, all but one, I'll repeat that, all but one have been forced out or asked to leave, many in less than one year, including Mr. Cole. What does this say about our council members and staff? If your actions and beliefs seem to benefit the community, but not necessarily the council or the planning staff, then you're gone. This even seems to happen in the planning department. A good example, Dan Galizio. I find it hard to believe that after all the interviews and all the time spent, Mr. Cole would voluntarily agree to leave after going to all the trouble and inconvenience of moving his... of moving his entire family to the Keys for less than one year. Another irregularity is that Mr. Cole's contract, if he resigns, he's due no compensation or severance pay. It appears that he's to receive both. This seems very unusual, seeing as how the last village manager, Ted Yates, neither resigned nor was forced to leave early, yet brought lawsuits against the village. Mr. Yates's contract was simply not renewed by council due to questionable decisions and inappropriate interactions with certain council members and staff. Now, renewal of a, non-renewal of a contract does not include any compensation and no basis for a lawsuit. I don't understand what this is all about. This community will certainly miss the efforts of Mr. Cole on projects ignored for years like the sewer problems, dealing with Key Largo wastewater, the fills, Founder's Park master plant, just to name a few. Something is not right here, and I hope that a full investigation will uncover what's really going on. It also seems that we can keep an interim village attorney much longer than we can keep our managers. This doesn't say much for our practices. So much for unity, transparency, and confidence. Thank you.
Marty?
Next up is Phyllis Mitchell.
Phyllis Mitchell, Alamo Marata, citizen for 25, 26 years, something like that. I am very dismayed about Mr. Cole resigning. I don't know why you didn't talk to him about it. I don't know why you didn't investigate any problem that he may or may not have been involved in. It seems to me that there was just pressure for him to resign. I personally have never heard any negative thing about Mr. Cole. I appreciate his weekly newsletters to the community. I'd like to be involved in what's going on, and I appreciated that very much, sir. I, I, I am, I hope you can do something about this. I hope you can come to a better conclusion than Mr. Cole resigning and leaving. From all comments, I think he's been, he's done a fabulous job. I, I hope that the rumor going around town is not true that the previous village manager is waiting to come back. I would like to remind you that he was not objective with all the council members, and we did lose one of the best land planners that we've ever had, I think, due to his service with us. Please, let's do something really civil about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Phyllis. Marty?
Next is Alina Davis.
Alina Davis, Alamo Marata. In my opinion, Mr. Cole has done a very good job as village manager, and he is always accessible by phone or email to the public. I find it interesting that the public is asked to come and meet the candidates for village manager, give our opinion on who we believe would be best suited for the position. Yet, for some reason, the village attorney called each village council member privately regarding the village manager. I believe that the process and the reason behind this action should be public, as we have been striving to make the village as transparent as possible. Mr. Cole has been doing an excellent job in this area with his weekly report. Transparency brings trust, and I believe this is of utmost importance to our citizens. Without trust in our government, we have nothing. Mr. Cole, I heard a catch in your throat when reading your resignation. I would like Mr. Cole to give us his honest answer. Do you really want to resign, or is this the suggested path of least resistance? Thank you.
Thank you, Alina.
Marty?
There's no one else.
Go ahead.
I'd like to ask you a question, if you could. You know, what happened a while back, I think, was it before the election, when you had an open door?
I don't want to go there, buddy.
Okay.
I have respect for Mr. Cole.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm trying to spare all that, so...
I understand, I understand, but I just think that...
I know, but, you know... Okay. Go ahead, anybody else? Don, Deb?
I'll just make a simple statement, that mine was, my decision was not based on the one complaint that was filed that you referred to. That is not my sole decision, and I did not speak to any of the other council people. I spoke to each of our two lawyers multiple times. I did not break sunshine.
Do you want to say something?
Does anybody want to tell the public who made the option to offer a severance?
I don't even know how to answer that, to tell you the truth, Steve. I think you're digging places that you don't have a shovel.
Well, I think Mr. Quick very clearly said that he didn't come up with it, so one of the council members must have suggested that to the attorney.
Not to my knowledge, okay? So I'm saying, I don't know.
I can tell you that I didn't do it, so...
I didn't, I didn't do it.
Okay, so where would you like to find the answer? I mean, we don't know, we don't know.
Wow, all right. Do you want to answer any of the other questions? Reasons wanting to sever the relationship with Ron?
Well, first of all, you're, I feel like you're putting me on the stand, and I find that very inappropriate.
I'm just trying to let the public know what happened, because I don't know what happened.
Well, no, you don't know what happened because you sat there and read something that had nothing to do with what really happened. It has nothing to do with him. And I'm trying to spare people from hurt feelings and stuff, so I have no intention on going into what happened. I'm sorry, I don't. So that's me.
Mayor, they want to sit there, they want to see, you got people that just came here and are saying stuff, but I know, in respect to Mr. Cole, you're not going to say anything that you, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I know.
I understand, but I think that what the public is doing is, it's, you know, anyhow.
What would you like to do, Rob? I don't know.
So, so, none of this... This, this was, this, my, I can't speak for everybody else. My decision was not based on one thing, it was my decision of knowing what I've learned since I've been on council over, over time. You're saying that my decision was based on talking to people, this...
I didn't say...
Council. That's not true. I didn't talk to anybody except lawyers.
I never implied that you did. I'm just trying to figure out...
No, it was implied that we broke sunshine. It was. It was definitely implied that we broke sunshine. We did not break sunshine.
No, I said that we talked individually to the attorney about something that was actionable, and I didn't understand why we were doing that and why we didn't have a meeting.
Okay.
And who came up with the idea for severance out of the blue? I had, what, what do you mean? This letter? What?
Maybe Allison or John, who were, you know, can answer that. I did not, I did not, I don't, I don't know what answer you're looking for. I don't, I didn't come up with a figure.
I'm not really sure that, I mean, the, the, the public...
The answer is the why.
The public meeting is happening now.
Right.
I mean, there was a request for a special session, as I, or a special meeting, as I understand it, that, that didn't get called. We're meeting now. The request for an executive session, we're not in litigation. There are specific statutory restrictions, they are very strict, as to when we can meet in an executive session. We've talked about this before. It's actual active litigation and collective bargaining, and this doesn't fit any of the statutory exemptions to the Public Records Law, which I had explained to Councilmember Friedman when we, when he asked that before.
Okay, so, Don, do you have anything to say? Questions?
I'll make a motion to accept Mr. Cole's resignation.
Is it a motion to accept, or is it a motion to approve the resolution?
Approve the resolution, sorry.
At tab seven.
Yes. I made a motion, we need a second.
I'll second that motion.
Marty, I'm sorry. Marty, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Deb Gillis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Don Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Steve Friedman?
No.
Councilmember Buddy Pinder?
Yes.
And Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
The motion passes four to one.
All right, so do we want to take a break, have a drink, or do we want to continue on? Do you want to, you want, okay. Good, so John, we're on tab eight.
All right, so tab eight is a resolution of the Village Council of Alamo Marata Village of Islands, Florida, approving the purchase of two Nutanix server blocks and two Cisco network switches from SHI International Corp. to upgrade the village's server disaster recovery and business community, sorry, business continuity infrastructure, authorizing the village manager to execute necessary documents, authorizing the village manager to expend budgeted funds, and providing for an effective date.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This is a part of a strategic plan that was created many years ago to keep the village running in the event of a hurricane during Irma, we were down for a while. So this is just replacing existing equipment that we have three years left of hardware maintenance on, and moving that to a co-location, replacing it with new equipment here at our data center, so that we can continue replicating to another part of the country in the event we have a hurricane here or another disaster. We've done a lot of research, and we looked at a cloud-only option, and it was very expensive, two or three times more than this. So we determined that the best option was to do this. It'll give us three years to plan for our next phase, and that's pretty much where we are. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Does anybody have any questions for Vince? I'm sorry.
That's all right. I don't have any questions.
Steve, do you have anything you want to ask? Okay, so, public comment, does anybody want to say anything? I, no?
No public comment?
No public comment?
We have someone who says they want to talk on tab eight, but I think it might be tab 10.
Who is it? Are they in the room?
Dr. Daly Granger, concerning firefighter compensation, so I think that's tab 10.
Yeah, that's not this tab.
That's not this tab, so I guess there's no public comment?
So I make a motion to approve as presented.
I didn't get to close public comment. Oh, I thought you did, I'm sorry. No, I'm kidding, go ahead, is, do I have a second?
No, I'll second.
Okay, Marty, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Deb Gillis?
Yes.
Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Mayor Don Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Steve Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Buddy Pinder?
Yes.
And Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
Thank you, Council.
That motion passes five to zero.
On to tab nine, John?
Tab nine is a resolution of the Village Council of Alamo Marata Village of Islands, Florida, amending the village's adopted budget for the fiscal year 2023 to 2024 and providing for an effective date.
Ms. Lisa?
Good evening, Council. This is the final budget amendment, and it's kind of lengthy, but it's pretty simple. It was, it's the final budget amendment for 2324 for last fiscal year. We're in the middle of working with our auditors to get our audit done, and this is a requirement to get them this information. Basically, I can just go through a few of the bullets here. What you found in your packet, you should have the Exhibit A, which shows each of the different items in there, and I'll just highlight some of those that are in there. Over in the general fund, the budget overages in there can be covered by transfers from other accounts in the same department, and so the highlights for that was our franchise fees. We got additional franchise fees for solid waste of $193,000, and the final payment on the SAFER grant, which is for the firefighters, the six firefighters we hired, of $299,000, and additional $195,000 in interest in our operating account and the Florida class investments. We also moved around, some of the items are budget line items that we just move around within a department or funds budget, and it doesn't really affect the bottom line, but it's just, sometimes there's overages and sometimes you render. The next one is the impact fee fund. The only thing we did there was to reflect revenue received that was not budgeted, and from additional impact fees for fire rescue, transportation, and interest totaling $111,000. The transportation fund was just reflecting a $46,000 in revenue from state revenue sharing. Same thing with affordable housing, just reflecting some more revenue received in additional impact fees there. The building fund was, it's needed to reflect revenue received was not budgeted for $268,000 for additional building permit fees, interest revenue, and the watershed management grant of $180,000. We did receive that. The capital projects fund, basically there, it's not anything that you wouldn't have known about. We did have to transfer over for the purchase of the Island Community Church, one and a half million from the general fund, and then we also received in interest of $50,000 more dollars and a canal restoration grant of $75,000. The only other strange thing that you might see there on the Marina Enterprise Fund, it's going to show in the negative, if you'll see the bottom line down there, and the only reason for that is that we had that breakwater project going on. It's just been completed at the very end of the fiscal year, and Pete has done the walkthrough with the guys that needed to have that information, and all that paperwork has been turned in, we're just waiting, it's $1.8 million, so we're waiting to get that, those funds back in. We have already expended the money, so that is the only reason that the Marina Fund shows in the negative. Once we get that in, we'll be back on the positive side. Then the wastewater fund, let's see, we had transfers, basically, yeah, and they were good, there wasn't anything else there. The stormwater fund was additional revenues in the amount of $9,400 for interest. So we were fine, everything looked good there. Next year, what we might want to consider, too, the kind of a surprise to me was on our increased cost for our health insurance, because we have to, some of the line items went over there because we are self-insured, partially self-insured, where that, those funds are charged to each department or fund, and so that's, you know, there are particular claims for their department, so, you know, I don't know what you do with the rising cost of healthcare, it's not anything, and you can't predict what's going to happen, so that's, you know, that's an unfortunate thing. But other than that, everything else, I think, looked pretty good. If you have any questions?
Anybody have anything?
Good question. I'm not going to hold you to it, but when do you expect to get the funds for the 1.8 for the...
We're working with, well, we've turned in everything that we've had to turn in. What happened is we're going back and forth, they're just asking for additional, you know, get this, get that, that kind of thing. So he just did the walkthrough, I want to say a week to a week and a half ago, got all that turned in, that was the final thing that was needed. So just, it's going back and forth with the, you know, via email with them, and so...
And once they get everything that they need, it's pretty quick after that?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, and these state and federal grants, we usually, Mary never had any trouble getting any of the funds back, she just, the most difficult one is when you have hurricanes. So, you know, like I told you earlier, we just got the final payment for Irma, and that was, what, seven years ago?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The final Irma payment this year. So, you know, so this one should come through pretty quick, I think.
Anybody else have anything for Ms. Lisa?
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Great job.
Okay.
All right. John, that would bring us to tab ten.
Okay, whoa, whoa. We had a public comment, and then, action on it.
Can you see where my brain is? I apologize. I'm leaving. Bye. All right, public comment.
Yes. Sue Miller would like to speak.
Okay.
I know, I know I'm ready to go, too.
Sue Miller, Lower Medocumbe. I just had a couple of questions about the report. It seemed odd to me that in the staff report, it says that this is the final report to bring the budget in line with what the actual expenses and revenues are. And yet, you see in the report that the actual expenses and the final budget request for expenditures is off by $900,000. So, I, I didn't understand that. I thought, there's something about this. I don't understand that there would be such a discrepancy between those two columns in your report. The column saying, this is what the budget request is, and this is what the actual numbers are, was off by, and on the expenditure side, it was off by almost $900,000. And, and I didn't quite understand that. I didn't understand how, how the fund balance was calculated. We all talk about the importance of the fund balance at the end of the year and how much money we have for, in case of hurricanes and how, and, and yet, we have a discrepancy in the, the numbers that we budgeted versus what we actually spent, and yet, the fund balance is exactly the same as what we anticipated. And I, I couldn't figure out how that was calculated. And, and I, I just have one final comment. It really bothers me that we never see a financial report except at budget time, when we see budget amendments, and then, we wait until the next budget, and we never see, it used to be, years ago, five, six, seven years ago, we got a monthly financial report that showed what our revenue was for the month, what our expenditures were for the month, so that you could see how taxpayers could see, and the council could see, how our money is being spent, and whether it's in line with what, what you approved as a budget. We never see a financial report, ever, except at budget time. And I really would like to go back to the point. I always ask for one, so the staff has to create a financial report for me, because every month, I ask for a detail of revenue and expenditures, so I can see as a taxpayer how, how the money is being spent. And I think it's something that everybody should see. I think the council should be aware of it, and I think that the public, the taxpayers have a right to know how their money is being spent without waiting until budget session. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
Sue, I got a question for you, and I, I know public comment, we, but do you just ask for a P and L type of report, or do you ask for a, a report very similar to this?
No, I asked for, I asked for a detailed report of all revenue and expenditures for the month, and they...
And the fund balances as they go. Yeah. Right?
Well, it shows, it shows what the balance of the account is.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any more public comment? Marnie?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Council, discussion? Anybody have a question or want to have Lisa answer anything? No? We're good?
Yep.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Marnie?
Councilmember Buddy Pinder?
Yes.
Councilmember Deb Gillis?
Yes.
Councilmember Steve Friedman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Don Horton?
Yes.
And Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero.
Thank you very much. On to tab ten.
Tab ten. And, and just a reminder, I'm going to add something at the end of this before we go. I just want to make...
So, nobody's running out?
Yes. We're not, nobody's running out. I want to make sure we, we discuss the, the acting village manager position, you know, at least have some discussion about it tonight.
Okay. Thank you. I was hoping to do that, too.
Tab ten is a resolution of the Village Council of Isla Marada Village of Islands, Florida, approving the ranking of the RFP 24-18 Evaluation Committee for Professional Services for a Compensation, Classification, and Job Study, authorizing village manager and village attorney to negotiate an agreement, authorizing execution of the agreement, and providing for an effective date.
Good evening, Council. In October, we went out for RFP for a compensation and classification job study. We had nine proposals in response to that RFP, and the evaluation committee is, ranks the highest proposal from PayPoint HR. You have the information in your packet. We did get approval in the budget session for $15,000 for the compensation study. None of the proposals came in around that $15,000 range. So, cost was kind of not the most important factor in our decision from the evaluation committee, because each of them were higher than what we had budgeted for. So, if approved, PayPoint HR's proposal came in, we would need a budget amendment of $17,500 for their cost proposed for the project. And we're recommending approval for us to go forward with an agreement, enter an agreement with them, PayPoint HR.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Sorry.
So, how did we come up with the original budget estimate that it was, that this study was going to be $15,000, and we're...
It was just a ballpark figure based on experience in the past. You never...
Had gone up that much?
Yes. It was a short ballpark, yes. There was conversation between myself and Mr. Cole about how much we, I thought, one of these studies would cost.
Right.
We did expand the scope a little bit in discussion. Mr. Cole and I expanded the scope a little bit from what just a general compensation and salary study would typically be. So, we wanted to include the living wage, and we also wanted to include the benefits portion of it, so it's not just plain salary survey. And so, a lot of the proposals came back with, one of the things that we are in dire need of is a revamp of our job descriptions that accurately reflect what village employees are doing in their current roles.
And so, they need to, they need to basically come in and study each position. And how long has it been since we've had a job study like this, a classification?
I think the most comprehensive one was done like 2009?
Really?
And then, beyond that, there's been minor ones that have taken place in between in years. We participate in salary surveys collectively with other municipalities every year.
Okay.
But they don't go into this detail. And again, a compensation and classification study, we have, we have compression issues. We also have issues between management positions and technical positions, in which some of those positions are out of balance.
Yeah.
So, a comp study that would delve into what the responsibilities are. We also have issues with FLSA, which are non-exempt and exempt positions, and how they're classified. There have been some changes to the laws. So, we do need a revamp of those and, and to have them looked at, at a more micro level than a macro level.
So, we're approving this, and we're also approving a, a budget amendment?
I'll bring back a budget amendment. I believe when we enter into the contract, whoever Lisa went, whenever Lisa needs it, I'll, I'll bring back that when we get the final. But this is a proposal for us to enter into that agreement.
Awesome. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else, Steve?
Yeah. In something like this, will the consultant give us a timeline for how, how long the amounts are good for? Because if they, if they give us these numbers this year, and then, three years from now, you know, compensation changes, are they giving us a specific kind of timeframe that they'll be willing to consult?
Yes. Yes. I'm sorry. So, part of the project will be to give us a compensation plan, which we currently do not have. We do not have a compensation plan that takes into account cost of living, the increases in the area, and things like that. So, they'll give us a model that we can just plug numbers into every year and keep that plan moving. We currently just have a plan that was from 2018 that we haven't really adjusted for cost of living, inflation, things like that. So, we're, our grades, our pay grades are out of sync. So, they're going to give us a model.
They're out of sync with what?
Inflation, cost of living. We have a lot of people that have worked here for a very long time that don't fit in their pay grade anymore, because you get a cost of living increase, but the, the salary grade doesn't move with the time. It's hard to explain.
Does the title have something to do with that as well?
That's another problem. But that's part of the job descrip...
So, it does?
Yes. Sometimes we've titled people to fit them in a grade that would be commensurate with the salary. So, we just need a whole revamp of the, the grade structure, the job classifications, and it's, it's very much needed. I just...
It seems like a lot to me.
It is a lot. It is a lot.
John?
Yeah. I just wanted to, just to follow up on the question about the budget amendment. I did want to point out there, in Section Five of this resolution, it does approve a budget amendment of the $17,500. So, whether Lisa needs, needs a separate approval of the spreadsheet or not, but this document actually does approve the, the budget amendment to increase it.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thanks, John.
Anybody have any?
I don't remember putting that in there.
Okay. Public comment?
I did that right. Okay. We have Sue Miller and Dr. Daly Granger. Ms. Miller would be first.
Sue Miller, Lower Medocumbe. When I read this, it reminded me of what happened when we selected the company to do our comp plan, where we had one company recommended, and a second and third company, they're all were very close as far as the selection committee tally was concerned. In this case, we, we have a possible 500 points, and the, the number one ranked company, which they've recommended you select, and you've only, only in the agenda do you have that one, one company. You don't have any others. But the number two company was three points out of 500 behind. So, they were very close. There were actually, the number one company that you're being asked to approve had two out of the five members of the selection committee pick them as number one. The number two one had two out of five select them as number one. So, it was really close, and I, and I really wonder whether you should consider two instead of one. I think it's a great thing. I read the entire proposal from the company that's recommended, and I thought it was really interesting. The one thing that made me a little nervous was that the company that was selected is from Maryland. The company that was number two, three points behind, was from Florida. And I wonder if that, you know, while they're not a local company, so they don't get local benefits, points for being a local company, they are a Florida company, understand Florida employment situations perhaps better than, than they would being from further north. One of the things in the report, they suggested that they were doing this for 115 employees. I don't know where they got that number. We have 139 employees.
Right.
And so, I don't know who they were, you know, what 24 employees that they eliminated, and, and whether that affects anything. I just think that, that when you have two, two responses that are so close, that, that you should have at least been able to see the second proposal. Thank you very much. Great job.
Thank you, Sue.
Marnie, anybody else?
Yes. Dr. Daly Granger?
I'm so glad to see all of you. Anyway, I'm a long-term resident of Isla Marada and have lived here for over 30 years. And I have a letter that I would like to read for, to you of something that has concerned to me. Dear Honorable Council Members, my name is Dr. Daly Granger, PhD APRN, that's nurse practitioner, and I'm writing as a long-term resident of Isla Marada since 1993. I've been a registered nurse for 67 years of direct patient care in multiple areas of hospital and community nursing, administration, and education, including serving as the founding dean of the School of Nursing at Florida International University in Miami. As a psychiatric advanced registered nurse practitioner, psychotherapist in, for nearly 50 years, I can accurately attest firsthand to the exemplary service provided by Station 19's personnel. I know good healthcare when I see it. And this is all about emergency services personnel compensation review. Station 19 paramedics and other professionals have directly saved three lives in emergency situations in our home alone. A friend of mine suffered a stroke while dining at my home and became unconscious. I didn't think he was going to make it out the front door. You also saved my husband's life, and also saved my life following a stroke. In each instance, however, the response time was under five minutes, with precise assessment and decisive actions that resulted in minimal, long-term fiscal effects for each of the three of us, not everything, as you can plainly see. Their rapid response and professional expertise, including coordinating helicopter transport to Miami when necessary, were crucial to these positive outcomes. Beyond emergency response, Station 19 also personnel has provided dignified assistance when my legally blind husband and I have experienced falls in our home, arriving promptly and helping us with grace and compassion. I'm deeply concerned to learn, however, that these certified licensed professionals earn only $18 an hour to start. I can't imagine a long-term seasoned professional making maybe more than, twice than that, which is certainly not a living wage. This compensation is severely inadequate, particularly given the high cost of living in the Florida Keys, required certifications and licensing, mandatory continuing education expenses, insurance requirements, the critical nature of their life-saving work, and the 24/7 emergency readiness. My husband and I put our money where our mouths are. We value their exemplary service so highly that we have included Station 19 in our estate planning. However, we respectfully request that you act now to adjust salary and benefits to better reflect the crucial goal of staying alive in order to retain these exceptional professionals before we possibly lose them to better paying jurisdictions. I urgently request that the Village of Isla Marada implement an immediate and substantial increase to both their pay scale and benefit packages for our emergency services personnel. This investment in our first responders is absolutely fundamental to maintaining our lives and the safety and security of our paradise in the Keys. Respectfully submitted, Daly Granger.
Thank you so very much. And I have to agree. I've gotten to know Terry very much lately. In fact, I'm doing a fundraiser in February for our fire department to get a, a fire rescue boat, and I would love it if you would attend. It's going to be in February. I'll have the date very soon. But I agree with you 100%. And I thank you for your comments, Council. Does anyone?
I'd like to say thank you very much.
Very much.
Because we do have an exceptional group of young paramedics here that are dedicated, just what you said about the helicopter. I mean, my mother...
I mean, my mother went out of here, my, my, they were, their response time, you know, my father, I mean, I can't say enough about Isla Marada, how they, you know, they're there.
Yeah. I, you know, I know good healthcare when I see it, and I applaud it as much as I possibly can, because I'm, I'm afraid that many people who provide healthcare don't get noticed for it.
Very true.
But it is, it is something that, that, for instance, I'm standing here after having a serious stroke, uh, a couple of years ago, partly because of the people at Station Nineteen.
A hundred percent.
And every single time that they have come, for whatever reason, to our home, they have simply been exemplary. That's the word that I would use.
That's wonderful, I think.
And they need to be constant.
Yes, they do. Yes, they do.
I, I agree. Thank you so much, Daly.
Yeah.
It's awesome, and, and you're a hundred percent right. Terry and his entire crew, I, I owe, I, just like you, I owe a debt, long-term debt of gratitude to, to Terry when he was much younger, and Walter, and, and Jason, when they helped my late wife go through some pretty tough times. So, these guys are awesome, and we do owe them a, more than just a debt of gratitude. So, thank you, Dan.
And, and, you know, I know that, because I live at mile marker seventy-five, um, I, I know the people, well, I know some of the people down there. There's always different people coming around.
And we're going to mix them up.
But all of them are, all of them are so well-trained and so compassionate.
Yes, ma'am.
And sometimes-
That goes back to part of the leadership, too.
Yes, it does.
We owe that to Terry, so thank you, Dan.
Yeah, okay. Well, I don't, I don't know Terry, but-
Terry, come up and say hello.
I want to say one thing before you. If you come again, you don't have to wait all night. Say something to the mayor, and we'll let you speak. I'm sure, we'll let you speak, so you don't have to stink, because you've been waiting a long time.
This is our fire chief, Terry Abel.
Yes, ma'am. So, the part you guys don't know is twenty-five years ago, I had a really bad fall, and her mental health is what got my head straight.
Really?
So, I could keep doing this job.
Oh. Oh, that's cool. That's cool. Thank you very much.
You see, I have a belief that the universe conspires in our favor.
Yes, it does. So, thank you again.
And as we keep that energy, we encourage the synchronicity back to us.
There's nothing better way to end this.
So, anyway, I have a copy of my letter that I'd like to give to you.
I would like to have that, please.
Yes, please.
Yes. If you want to, if you give it to Marnie, the clerk, she can get, uh, make sure to get it.
She can distribute them.
Thank you very, very much again. It was a pleasure. It really was.
It was great being here. I might just come back just for the entertainment.
And listen, if your husband's figured out how to play that banjo yet, I want to hear him come play it.
No, he has not figured out how to play that, but, um, uh, we're, we're, we're still rocking around.
At it, girl.
Well, good. And again, thank you very much. It was a pleasure.
Keep that spirit up, too, how you're great. Thank you.
I also wanted to say that I think we've got one of the best fire and rescue squads in the country. They have done some marvelous things.
We need to approve this.
So, I guess we-
Okay, we got to approve this.
Okay, let's go back to Jamie, as I, I thought she was going to offer to do it. I didn't understand the change here. So, I guess we have public comment for her? Are we, for Jamie, are we done with that?
That was public comment.
Oh, I didn't know that had any, I was wondering.
Well, indirectly.
Oh, okay, all right. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Anyone else? Marnie?
No, ma'am, that's it.
All right, so council, anything else? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Marnie, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Deb Gillis?
Yes.
Councilmember Buddy Pinder?
Yes.
Councilmember Steve Friedman?
Yes.
Uh, Vice Mayor Don Horton?
Yes.
And Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
And motion passes five to zero.
Thank you very much. And I, John, I believe, uh-
Yep, um, uh, the, with the passage of tab seven, um, there's a vacancy in the manager position. First, I'd like to, um, thank Rob for the ability to work with him. It's, it's been a, a pleasure. He's a consummate professional. I appreciate the time that we've been able to work together. But we, we need to, you know, make the, uh, a, uh, we, we need to, uh, obviously ensure that that position is, is filled, um, both in the short term and in the long term. So, uh, I would stress to you all that, um, we need to get someone in that position sooner rather than later. Um, since we're meeting on Thursday, I don't think it's a huge deal to wait until Thursday if you all want to do it, but I wanted to at least plant that seed in your head, because I think that that's, it's important that we do it at least by Thursday.
I'd like to wait till Thursday, if that's okay, as something, you know, just if that's okay with everyone, or unless you don't.
I'm good.
I-
You ready?
I would like to, um, and I, I have an idea in mind, but I would like to invite anybody who, who would like to be, um, considered to reach out to me. That's why I wanted to wait till Thursday. Yes. No, I, I get it. I'd like, I, I, I have a thought, but I, I really, if anybody out there, I would like you to reach out to me, please. Really, reach out to all of council.
Out of respect for that, uh, I'll, I'll hold off till Thursday.
Okay. Well, anybody else have anything to say?
Can, can we ask that be put at the beginning of the meeting?
Yes, we can have that to the agenda, and, and, you all control the agenda, so if you want that first, um, we can, we can do that first. Right, we'll put it right after general public comment.
Yes. Okay, so where are we? Is the meeting adjourned?
Yeah, unless you all have anything else, that's all from me.
Okay, then I, the meeting's adjourned. I thank you very much, and Rob, I thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, thank you, Rob.